Nice hustle, Raul. Varsity style. All right, good morning, everybody. We are going to call this meeting to order. It's October 20th, 2022, regular city commission meeting. And our first order of business is to adopt the agenda. Commissioner Duncan Walker, did you want to speak before the clerk read the modifications?
I just wanted to say that I need a point of clarity on D seven, so I'd like to pull that to the regular agenda.
Okay, G seven?
No, D.
D seven, okay. Oh, yeah, 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 okay. Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, do you want to go over the modifications?
Yes, I will. D seven, there had some added text and backup, and then also we'll move that to the regular business discussion agenda. D nine, resignations of Deborah Neal Maurisi from the Development Review Board, and Carla Lewis from the UAB, and Karen Guerin, thank you, from the Nature Center Commission, updated text and added backup. F one, downtown strategic plan project update, updated text. F three, Gainesville Regional Utilities amended debt business, excuse me, debt management policy, move from consent to the morning business discussion. And then in eight, amending Chapter twenty six, micro mobility services, added backup. O two, amending the City of Gainesville sexual offender and sexual predator ordinance, residency prohibition, added backup. And one thing that's not reflected here is Z one, land development code amendments to parking regulations and minimums. There was added backup for that item as well. And then one additional change to the regular agenda will be the addition of D seven, Gainesville Police Department radio purchase.
Okay, and so let's try to do D seven at the end of our morning session, if at all possible. If not, we'll just have to get it, get to it when we can. But if all goes expeditiously, we'll try to do that this morning. Okay, Commissioner Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we adopt the consent and regular agendas as modified with placing D seven, Gainesville Police Department radio purchase at the end of the morning business discussion.
Second?
Okay, motion of second that we adopt our agendas. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Comments, and we have none.
Okay.
Our next item is the business discussion, item F one, downtown strategic plan project update, twenty twenty-two to twenty, excuse me, two thousand twenty-two to six, gas six four three, with the recommendation that the City Commission adopt the City of Gainesville strategic plan.
Hoorah, all right, Mr. Brettell, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, and members of the Commission. So today, we wanted to try to get back to the Commission in a timely manner, the discussion we had with the Commission about the downtown strategic plan in August. And I, the way we're going to do this is my colleague and I, Sarit, have just a very brief presentation, maybe ten minutes or so. But what we'd like to do is I'd like to just hit on the information in the agenda item for folks maybe who haven't been paying attention to this topic. And then Sarit is going to review some of the aspects of the, some of the changes that were made based on the Commission motion in August. And then we'd just like to talk to you briefly about next steps. So just summarizing the agenda memo, as a reminder, the downtown strategic plan was, was and is a top priority for the City Commission. It was mentioned explicitly in your, in the City Commission's strategic plan. We entered into a contract with MKSK, our consultant, in October of two thousand and twenty. So this has been a two-year process. Ms. Sela and I were the staff that were the project leads, but we did work with a lot of folks in the community and within the city. We came to the City Commission in April of two thousand and twenty-one, and we discussed with the Commission how we were going to engage with the community. When we did that, the Commission endorsed our engagement methodology. I wanted to make sure the Commission was aware that we did speak with staff from EO at the time and the communications staff person to basically make sure that our methods were in keeping with the thinking on engaging with the community at that time. This year, we came to, we did a fairly in-depth dive into the plan with the Commission and the community in April. We had a community meeting in the Bo Diddley Plaza that was following a former community meeting in October of two thousand and twenty-one. We brought the plan before the GCRA in April, and then we brought it to the City Commission for a deep dive of its principles. We did that, we finished out the plan and brought that in for the GCRA in August. The GCRA recommended approval of the plan to the City Commission with a modification, which Sarit can touch on. And the City Commission gave us five, what I would call potential or prospective changes to the plan, not really into any real substance, but on the margins, I would say. And we've made those changes in the meantime. So I think with that, I'm going to ask Sarit to come up and basically go over the changes that we've made, and then also talk about the next steps.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Brettell.
Thank you.
Ms. Sela, welcome.
Thank you. Hi, Sarit Sela. And in the backup, you have a memo from MKSK, and it describes the points that were mentioned in the August meeting. So we addressed the five points. So the first one was add Depot Park and Power District as strategic focus areas to the plan, and then change the downtown study area into greater. So, so what we did is we, and I have here the overhead, I don't know if it's available, but so we, the first, the first point had a couple of items within it. Add the Depot Park and Power District as strategic focus areas, then collect more information about the demographics of the focus area, and clarify which areas are considered downtown. So in terms of clarification of the downtown study area, we changed the nomenclature to say greater study area. So it's not downtown, greater downtown area, but greater study area. So the downtown area that is the focus area is here in red, and this is the surrounding context area, which we called study area. And as you can see, the, the plan itself, which is in the backup, has clouds, and this is to make it easy to follow up on any changes that were done. The Power District and Depot Park are, because they have their own activities and/or plans, we saw them as context areas that are holding the downtown and have their own identities, either planned or already in action. And so they are, so that is also explained in that, in page sixteen and seventeen. We also talked, we updated the demographics. And as Eric mentioned, we've been working on that plan for two years, so we just updated to the most current demographics information. And that is all in, in the new backup. And the second point that was requested was clarified that idea number nine does not mean reducing the downtown zoning. So it does not mean reducing the downtown zoning. And this is clarified in the, in the narrative in page eighty-six. So if you go to that document, we can see here very clearly that the plan supports maintaining the zoning as is, and the densities and building heights already established in the downtown district are to stay, to remain, okay? The next point that was requested is to add an idea of more frequent and robust programming and events. And this, this topic is already discussed in the plan in idea number two, shape the downtown identity, under experiential campaign section. So if we go to page sixty-seven, and the team elaborated on that topic, the idea of the identity is a very comprehensive marketing and branding campaign, which is not only signage and brand name, but also the experience that is part of being there. So what we're selling, we're actually, you can actually experience that. So that is here, the programming and the events, and we have elaborated on that. And then the next one was help with vacant spaces such as pop-up stores and galleries. And that is in, later in the plan, in pages one oh six, one oh seven, within idea number thirteen, which talks about unlocking real estate potential. So there is a little bit of text about that, about how to reuse, how to bring more life into vacant spaces, and also help transform sites with the programs. And then the last one was to bring more information and a path forward on a coordinating agency, organization to work with downtown businesses. So that is the main ideas of, ideas number fifteen and sixteen are to form a place management organization and continue to build capacity. It's at the last portion of the document, towards the end, pages one fourteen, I think, almost to the end, with different case studies, and more information about how to do it, case studies from roles of other places, how to start, you start with clean and safe, and can grow further and further. And the next, and moreover, for, to build on that, we're actually planning a retreat in the first week of November for staff and key stakeholders to start looking into the next steps on creating such an organization. The retreat is going to, to be a two-day retreat, the first week of November, and it's going to have, we're going to have interviews with peer organizations like that. So December first, we're coming back to you with the downtown agenda item, and that will include our takeaways from those interviews. What did we learn? How can we move forward with an organization like that? In that retreat, we will also have discussions about the streetery, the Sweetwater Greenway and park. And so these are for us the first next steps for implementation. So it will be the streetery, the Sweetwater Branch Greenway and Sweetwater Park. And then we will have the downtown management organization interviews. And in December first, we'll come back to you with that. Next week, the parking in downtown is coming to the City Commission. We will also, so we're kind of putting together a few items that relate to downtown next steps, and come back to you with that soon. That's it for me. If you have any questions?
Okay, very much thanks to everybody who's been involved with this. It's been an exhaustive process. So thank you both for giving us the update today, getting us to this point. I know a lot of folks are enthusiastically awaiting our action, so we can really get to work on this. It's going to be a long process, but, you know, one that I think will reap incredible rewards for our community. Commissioner Santos?
Thank you, Mayor, and then thank you all for your work. And in updates, I move we adopt the downtown strategic plan.
Okay, motion of second that we adopt the plan. Thank you also for taking that feedback and incorporating that into this final draft. I think they are substantive, but helpful changes. Okay, Madam Clerk? Nobody signed up? Mr. Platt, did you want to speak to this item? Okay, come on up. A reminder for anybody here that wants to speak to items, we do have little cards that you can fill out.
I'm sorry, I forgot about the card.
It's all good, it's all good.
I am glad to see attention on the downtown development, but when it comes to unlocking potential, I want to mention a couple more things. If I were a visiting Gainesville and staying at the height of the Hampton, I'd be so thrilled to know that on a Monday morning, or Tuesday or Thursday evening, I could go a block away for free yoga classes with talented, licensed, and insured teachers. I feel three years younger since I started doing those yoga classes. So I think that's an example of how we could promote the city better to residents and visitors. Another example of unlocked potential would be unlocking the creek, completing the deep, deep. We beg, brag about Depot Park as our gem. We need to exploit all its potential. And one important one would be to un-pipe Hogtown Creek and continue the strip park along there to connect all the way into Depot Park, continue preserving the model of green space and moderate density housing east of the creek and business and development interests west of the creek. So I think that's an important way to get the most potential out of downtown. Took a couple examples of how to.
Thank you very much. Anybody else want to speak to this item? Okay, then we'll go back to the Commission. All in favor of the motion to approve the downtown strategic plan, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, go forth and do great work. Madam Clerk?
Our next item is F two, Murphy Well Field Consumptive Use Permit Renewal and Agreement with Liquid Solutions Group LLC, with the recommendation that the Commission authorize the general manager who doesn't need to negotiate and execute an agreement with Liquid Solutions Group LLC to provide professional services in support of the CUP renewal extension effort by, subject to approval by the city attorney as to form a legal.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner. So one of the foundational things that the City of Gainesville does through GRU is provide drinking water to nearly two hundred thousand people in our community. As part of that, we do that through a, we do, we get our water supply through an agreement and a permit through the state of Florida, through the Water Management Districts. We are, we currently have a twenty-year permit. We're approaching halfway through that permit. But with that, we have an opportunity to extend it beyond that twenty years to make sure that we have that water supply even beyond twenty thirty-four, which is what the current permit is. And so, Mr. Hutton, you all know, is here this morning to give a presentation about that, talk a little bit about what the permit is, and then talk about this opportunity with the ultimate request to have a consultant assist us with the groundwater modeling aspect of that work. So, Mr. Hutton?
Mr. Hutton, good to see you.
Thank you very much, good to see you too. Good morning. I may start with, if we could start with the presentation first, and I'm going to put that in and a couple slides in. Or I can start on that slide if you want to.
I'll get it up for you.
There we go.
How close? Almost.
That's what happens when you have a mixture of slides and paper. So as Tony had introduced, we're, I want to give you a little background. We provided an update of this to the Utility Advisory Board last week. So I'm going to give a little background and lead up to, you know, what the consumptive use permit is and why we want to extend it. So next slide, please. Oh, I get, do I get control? All right, thank you very much. So.
If you think that's cool, check this out.
All right.
And that's by way of letting all y'all know that we have these now. So if you need, if you need, in your discussion with the Commission or staff, to point something out, just let me know, and I'll give you the power of the pen. Yes, yeah, well, as the clerk pointed out, these might somehow walk off if they're not kept under lock and key. But anyway, yeah, just let me know, and I'll pass them down. Sorry, Mr. Hutton.
That's okay.
You know I was chomping at the bit to show off our new little tool that we have up here.
That's okay. So we provide water service to about two hundred thousand people in the Gainesville area. That's about three-quarters of the Elatra County population. We, and I'll show that graph in a minute, but we've been growing over the last thirty years, pretty much at a steady pace. Based on that, we would expect another fifty to sixty thousand more people moving in and receiving our water service in the next twenty years or so. Most of our water customers are wastewater customers too, so most of that water we send out to our customers comes back as wastewater to us. We collect, treat, and beneficially reuse that water. We have our goals, of course, of economic, environmental, and social sustainability. And now, if we can share that graph, that would be great. From the camera, please. So this just shows our water use over time. And so the, this green line is our population over time. And you can see it's kind of a steady growth. With exception, we had kind of a flattening during the Great Recession period. Then the blue line really shows our overall, this amount of water we send out to our customers from the Murphy plant. And you can see that around two thousand and seven, we really hit kind of a peak. And that is about the time that I think conservation really started to hit home, that we needed to do something. And so we, that was about the time we started really ratcheting up those tiered water rates. Prior to that, we had, I remember, water used to be ninety-nine cents a K gal. I think we had a first tier that was like a dollar twenty-nine or something. But, you know, starting then, that's when we started ramping that up. There's also been a really a ramp up of efforts for conservation, you know, amongst GRU, Elatra County, the Water Management Districts, and just the overall public awareness. So we were able to bring our per capita, our per-person usage down pretty dramatically since that time. And when you look at more recent data, this is, you know, the last couple of years, we're sort of around that twenty-one, twenty-two million gallons per day, which is about the same amount of water we were using back in the nineties, which compares pretty well compared to two thousand and seven. We were up in that twenty-seven, twenty-eight million gallons per day usage. That is driven, as I mentioned, by that drop in that per person or per capita uses we use. That's the term we use in the industry. So our residential per capita in Gainesville, or amongst our customer base, I should say, is around fifty-nine gallons per day per person, that's for residential use. That compares pretty well with like the Water Management District average of about eighty-five. So we do, we do pretty well overall. So we've accomplished a lot in conservation, which has helped. Next, if we can go back to the slide presentation. Okay, thank you very much. Uh-oh, we're not advancing. Ah, very good. So our overall Water Resource Sustainability Strategy includes planning and collaboration. The water supply planning is really done on a regional basis in Florida. As we've mentioned before, we're primarily located in St. John's River Water Management District, although some of our customers are in the Swanee River Water Management District, and they're right, you know, we're right on the border between the two districts. So we work both, with both of them and other stakeholders and the Department of Environmental Protection on water supply planning. You know, one of the things we really emphasize is, this stuff's pretty complicated, but we really emphasize sound science. And we also want to make sure that our customers are being treated fairly through these planning processes. Another part of our Water Resource Strategy, of course, is water conservation, we just mentioned, and then the beneficial reuse of reclaimed water. So essentially, a hundred percent of the water we, a hundred percent of our reclaimed water is used beneficially. About seventy percent of the total amount of water that we withdraw to send out to our customers ends up going back to recharge into the ground, and which, that really helps reduce our environmental footprint. If you're taking it out and then putting it back in, you're going to have less impact. So I always never pass up on the opportunity to show a picture of the Sweetwater Wetlands project. I mean, that is a, an example of a project where reclaimed water is part of that project that's being beneficially reused for sort of a restoration and recharge. And the other picture to the right is our GRU wetland park that we're working on. And that project is a recharge project, is one of the projects that's enabling us to move forward with doing this consumptive use permit renewal. So changing gears a little bit, so our water supply comes from the Murphy well field. We have sixteen wells that are, pull water from the Florida aquifer. I mentioned, we're pumping about twenty-one to twenty-two million gallons per day on average right now. We have this consumptive use permit that allows a maximum of thirty million gallons per day on an annual average basis. So a little more review, you know, what is a consumptive use permit or cup? And as we, Tony mentioned, I mean, it's issued by the Water Management Districts. It's typically a twenty-year duration. Those consumptive use permits are required for all larger users, so that would be municipalities like us, but also includes a large agriculture operations, golf courses, those types of users. It's, the main focus is the regulating amount of water that's withdrawn. One of the things that they, that the Water Management Districts are charged with is that these withdrawals cannot cause what they call significant harm to natural resources. And so there's a number of metrics they use to try to determine whether or not there is significant harm. If you're by the coast, saltwater intrusion's a factor, not so much in our area. Wetland impacts is something they look at. There's a term called minimum flows and levels, which are particularly pertinent in our area. And I'm going to talk a little bit about what is the minimum flows and levels. And that kind of leads up to why, I'm kind of building the story as to why we want to renew our permit. So in MFL, they're set individually for different lakes, rivers, and springs. And what that does is that they try to define what level of pumping impact is acceptable to prevent significant harm. So there's a reality in that, if you're even a small user, if you're pumping water out of the ground and using it, and some of that water is being lost, you have an impact on our water resources. And so it's not possible to say there's, we're going to have zero impact, because if to have zero impact, we have to basically pack up and leave. So the intent is to define, hey, what, how do we, what level of pumping is acceptable to prevent a significant harm, which really means a negative change in ecosystem or somehow the water bodies being affected, so that it's, it isn't what it used to be. And so that's actually a very complicated process. It involves a lot of field work, a lot of the groundwater modeling. That's, one of the things that's really difficult technically is that natural weather variations cause these, you know, water bodies to go flow up and down. You know, everybody kind of knows, when it's raining a lot, Santa Fe River may be at flood stage. When we're in drought, it's really low. So it's, it's actually very difficult technically to kind of figure out, well, how much of this is caused by pumping and how much of this weather? And so they tend to be very complicated, and a lot of times, a lot of controversy surrounding MFLs. So how does it affect a water user like us? So if the district sees that, oh, man, there is significant harm occurring, or we project it will happen in the future, then there has to be a prevention or recovery plan. Then if you have a consumptive use permit, then you're kind of on a hook. You have to figure out how you are going to comply and meet your obligations related to preventing or recovering that problem. And so that might be additional conservation, reduce your demand, might be some reclaimed water projects, might be you got to come up with a alternative water supply other than groundwater to meet your needs. Or in some cases, you would participate. Or in some cases, you would participate in a, like a regional project, which I'm sure going to talk about in a minute, that the district or somebody else is doing. So MFLs in our area, a particular concern. So we're located here, that's our Murphy well field showing all the wells. Lake Brooklyn in Geneva are over in Keystone Heights area, which is to the east of us. There is an MFL established for those lakes last year. I'm going to talk about that in a little bit more in a minute. The Lower Santa Fe and Itchitucknee, which are also close to us, there are MFLs being developed for those right now. And those are also very, of high importance to us. In the future, there'll be MFLs developed for the Swanee River as well. So those are not developed yet. But in general, the closer you are to a water body, the more likely you can have an impact to that. And of course, the bigger your withdrawal, the more likely you have an impact. So how are we meeting these MFLs? So as I mentioned, conservation certainly helped a lot in reducing our pumping rates. For this Lake Brooklyn in Geneva MFL that was passed last year, so we're not able to meet that on our own with conservation or with our recharge project. So in order for us to meet that, we needed to participate in this Black Creek Water Resources Development Project. And I think a lot of commissioners probably remember, we kind of got a little bit of controversy with the St. John's Water Management District last year on this. But ultimately, we were able to work out a scenario where we were able to contribute to this project, which is on order of $100 million project, that we're contributing $2.7 million to that project. We actually made a first payment last year of half of that. We will be making a second payment next year for the other half. So in exchange for us participating in that project, it really, it fully offsets our impacts to these lakes. And it, it sets us up to be able to move forward with renewing our water use permit early. So that's one of the reasons why we want to move forward is while we've, we've paid our $2.7 million, I should say, our rate payers have paid the $2.7 million. And, you know, so we want to take advantage of that situation to move forward with, you know, renewing that permit. The other MFLs I mentioned, the Santa Fe and Itchitucknee, haven't been finalized yet, but we are able to meet those MFLs, we feel, through our recharge projects. And I mentioned our new recharge wetland is part of that overall strategy. One of the things that we've had to do though is we can't just say we're going to do that. We have to show it. We got to prove it. And so that involves a lot of groundwater modeling. And so we've done a lot of work and used this particular contractor, Liquid Solutions Group, to develop a, what they call a subregional groundwater model to really better define, well, what, when we do this wetland project, what is the impact? How is this going to help? How much does it help? And so we've just, we're just completing that effort right now, which has been sort of a cooperative effort between our consultant, us and the two Water Management Districts. So all that being said, we've mentioned before, our permit, we got it in 2014. It expires in 2034. It is right now set at 30 million gallons per day, which was actually the same allocation we had in the previous permit. We're still able to stretch that allocation another 20 years from where it was before. We are proposing to do is go in and either, well, either get it extended or early renewal out to 2020, excuse me, 2044. And so the intent really is to help ensure our long-term water supply for our community. It really, as I mentioned before, builds on all the work that we've done and what we've paid related to the Brooklyn and Geneva MFLs. And so we will anticipate we would start that process this year. And it will, it's a fairly extensive process, probably take us into next fiscal year. There's a lot of things that have to be done. One of them is our projections, how much water are we asking for? And so you have to go, it's a pretty extensive process of projecting your future demands. And, you know, we want to do, for our own purposes, we want to try to nail that down as well as we can, but we also have to demonstrate that to the district. What are you, what are you asking for? What's your need? And then on the flip side of that, you have to be able to show, well, if we do, if we pull this amount of water out, we are able to offset our impacts so that we meet those MFLs and other constraints. There's also a fair amount of work in monitoring, developing monitoring plans. We'll need some legal assistance. I mentioned groundwater modeling is a big part of it. So what we're going to be asking is that we want to source justify Liquid Solutions, who have been with us on all this all along. And they actually helped us with the last permit renewal as well. We want to use them for the technical work related to that. So that leads us up to the recommendation, which was to authorize a general manager or designated to negotiate and execute a contract with Liquid Solutions to provide those professional services in support of the CUP.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hutton. And I, I want to thank you all for making this presentation. I, I wanted this on the regular agenda because it's not something we talk about often, but it's one of the most important things that we do as an organization, right? I mean, there's not a whole lot you can put ahead of access to clean and safe water to a community. It's why Gainesville became Gainesville in the first place, right? Because we had a great water source. And so I wanted folks to have an opportunity to either learn or be reminded about the tremendous amount of effort that we have put towards conserving that valuable natural resource and how effective our conservation efforts have been. I mean, it's really a remarkable story that we, you know, go out for a 20-year consumptive use permit, asking for not an additional drop of water, even though we know we're going to have significant population growth, you know, 50,000 to 60,000 people in the territory. So I, I really want to just thank, you know, GRU staff and, and, you know, Rick and you, Mr. Cunningham, have been part of that for a long time. But I also want to go back to David Richardson, who was a remarkable leader in, in water wastewater and I think really set up a lot of this sort of professional ethos for the utility to, to establish who we are and how we're going to approach our stewardship over this, this precious resource. So I know there's a lot of discussion out there and, and, you know, it was even part of our conversation last week. But, you know, the fact of the matter is that people need access to clean and safe water. We don't want folks to use any more than they need, but we want to make sure that when they need it, they have it and it's safe and reliable. So this is an important process. I think if we are, and I have no doubt that, that between staff and the next commission, we'll be able to effectively get an extension on our consumptive use permit. It will really create a baseline sort of stability for the utility and the customers that we serve for that next 20-year period. So I'm, I'm glad that we're, that we're at this point. And obviously, LSG has been a great partner in helping us do this. And having somebody that's knowledgeable about our organization and, and our past efforts is, I think, very helpful as well. So with that, I'll turn to Commissioner Santos.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your work. I think, one of the things I think you should, should get out of the moors are how much we really have cut per, per capita. I don't think people realize how much we use per person versus in the Water Management District. And I guess, but I'm pretty sure Florida itself probably uses a lot more water than we do as well, beyond just our district, probably even higher than our, our district. I think that's information that should get out there and that people should know and be proud of. We've done a lot. I will move staff's recommendation.
Okay, motion and second that we approve the recommendation to execute the agreement with Liquid Solutions Group to help us with our consumptive use permit extension. Madam Clark, do we have anybody sign up to speak to the side?
Yes, Mr. Crowley Blount.
Okay, Mr. Blount, come on up. Thank you, Mr. Hutton.
Great report, thank you. I have constant concern and hope that the system has constant concern about the potential of, potential of, of corruption of our water system from the copper's site. I never was satisfied with the solution of just encasing that stuff instead of removing it. And I wonder how close is the monitoring, ongoing monitoring of that? And is that monitoring independent of current and past owners' interests and only in the interest of the public?
Thank you, Mr. Blount. You just gave me some traumatic flashbacks there. PTSD, exactly, yes.
Mr. Mayor, if you can, so Rick is the right person. Rick has been working on that project for most of his career here at GRU. And it isn't ongoing, it's not over, you know, there's still monitoring and all that. So I'll let Rick just address that for, with his comments.
Yeah, that's, that's a really good question. And so that, the project of getting that remediation complete is getting very near the end. It's taken quite a while, but I think one of the questions Mr. Blount asks is, well, you know, how about, you know, why can't they remove all that stuff? And those of us that might remember from way back when we were having initial discussions with EPA on that, is that was something we really advocated for. The problem with that was, is that the, just sort of the scale of and magnitude of the project to actually dig up all that material and haul it off was just gigantic. And I think at the time, the, and we had, we have our own experts that have been working with us on this, but at the time, the estimated cost for removing it all was on the order of $500 million. And so, I mean, the reality is, is that was just not something EPA was going to make the PR, the responsible party do, it was just not a practical thing. The reality though is that one of the things they did do with EPA is, and we've been really holding people's feet to the fire, is they did have been using a technology to immobilize the material in place. They have had to demonstrate a lot of performance metrics that it's really working. And actually, the, all of the indication is, is that this process they have been using to immobilize the material in place really is working. So that's, and it's a bolt, a belt and suspenders type approach. So we're, they're immobilizing this, what, the material is creosote that happened from the wood operations. They're immobilizing that in place. They have to do monitoring to verify that, that is, has in fact, it remains immobile and also checking the groundwater concentrations within that area. And then the other layer of protection is they're going to be building what they, a subsurface barrier wall around the site so that if there is contamination to groundwater, it can't, it can't leave from this barrier wall. And they haven't completed that yet. There's been some delays, logistics having to do with, they have to relocate a stormwater ditch and Verizon optic line, fiber optic line had to be relocated. But they're, it's actually, what we understand is that's supposed to be done in the next year. The other thing, of course, is monitoring. So there are some, what we call sentinel wells that are located between that site and our well field. Those are, they are operated by the responsible party, their consultant. But there are some pretty strict rules on, you know, how they do this. So they do get a lot of oversight. So it would be, it would be difficult for them to, you know, somehow manipulate the data or, you know, otherwise, you know, not report it properly. So, and those sentinel wells have consistently come up clean. So, you know, we can never say, oh, we're 100% certain there will nothing ever, ever happen. I mean, I think it's something we will always be monitoring the site, always be paying attention, you know, are there, you know, are there indications that the remediation has stopped working or something's not going right? That'll always be something we pay attention to. But I think we have sort of multiple layers of protection in place that give us a lot of assurance that our water supply will stay protected.
Yeah, thank you for, for that concise kind of synopsis of something that was, I don't know how, we spent thousands of hours in meetings, literally thousands of hours in meetings over that. I would really, I would really encourage, and I'll just, I guess, direct this at you, Mr. Cunningham, I would encourage you to include an agenda item at an appropriate meeting, whether that's a new committee structure or GPC or something, but a, but a sort of updated overview of the, that, that superfund site project. Because, you know, I, I think I'm what's left of the institutional wisdom of that initial process. And certainly the new folks coming on might not have even lived here. And it's such a critical, critical project and an amazing opportunity, once they're done with the cleanup, that the commission, I think, is going to have a, you know, a real good discussion about how, how that gets redeveloped and adds to the, the quality of our city. So anyway, I think it would be a great idea for, for you guys to sort of walk them through, how did it start? What was the problem? How did we approach the solutions? Where are we now? And as you said, I mean, I think we expect them to be done with what they're going to do beyond the monitoring relatively soon. And then it gets into a, you know, now what do we do with that giant piece of property in the middle of our city? So, you know, I don't, I don't think we need to decide that now, but I, if you kind of put a pin in that and, and then when the new commission is ready to drink from the fire hose, you can, you know, put that on agenda and have a, have a good discussion. And he might, you know, might even, you might even want to do like a community workshop where folks have been following this, could participate as well. But anyway, we do have a motion on the floor to approve the recommendation to contract with LSG. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hutton.
Thank you very much.
All right, Madam Clark?
Our next item is F3 Gainesville Regional Utilities amended debt management policy with recommendation that the commission approve the amended GRU debt management policy.
And Mr. Cunningham?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, just like the, we were just talking about the water plant. GRU operates a number of very large facilities, power plants, water wastewater treatment plants, over 5,000 miles of linear facilities that we manage. As part of that, the utility industry, you, you take on debt as you work on these things or replace them or install, install, renew and replace. And so debt is part of that, is part of running a utility. And the purpose of that is, is you, you, you may do a big investment, but you're paying for it over time with all the customers that use that over that time. The Budget Finance and Accounting Group, which is led by our Chief Financial Officer, Claudia Raznick, they focus a lot of time and effort on managing that debt and how to reduce that debt and bring it down and to do that and to essentially save our customers' money. And so as part of that, there are a number of practices that we have had in place that we wanted to make sure we codified. We have a debt management policy. We've had that for a while. We wanted to add some things to that to really document and codify what those practices are. As part of that, Ms. Raznick has brought to the commission in December of 2021 essentially what these items are and was presented to the commission. In addition to that, in August of this year, it went to the finance committee with these changes to the debt, these amendments to the debt management policy. And now we're bringing it to the commission. And so Ms. Raznick will have, she does not have a presentation, but she'll have some comments to provide more context than I just provided and more insight and then obviously be available to answer questions. So thanks, Claudia.
Thank you, Ms. Raznick, welcome.
Good morning. So thank you very much for that introduction. I think you covered quite a bit of what I was going to cover, so that's great. Thank you, General Manager.
That's good teamwork, like going in, right? Like the right hand and the left hand know what each other's doing.
Absolutely. So GRU is highly levered. That doesn't come to a surprise for, for anyone. We do have a debt management policy that's been in place for longer than I've been at the utility. And we update it periodically. And talking with the commission over the past, I would say probably 12, 18 months-ish, we're talking about the existing debt policy, but what are the things that we can add into that policy to essentially codify many of the discussions that we've had over time? And they're really surrounding delevering and credit metrics. And so what I mean by delevering, the utility needs debt to keep its capital infrastructure in such a manner that we can provide safe and reliable service so that the infrastructure servicing our customers, but also producing the revenues that end up paying back our investors. And so when I say that we are highly leveraged, we have a significant amount of debt at the utility. And working with the commission, we've been talking about ways to actually start to reduce that leverage component. So that's the delevering piece. The credit metrics piece is that when we're going through the budget discussions over the past year or so, it dawned on me that we've never had the commission essentially codify where you want the utility to be as far as the credit ratings. So those are the two pieces that have been adjusted within the debt policy itself. I brought a couple of slides, I can put on the overhead and talk to that, but are there any questions before I do that?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Okay.
Thanks.
If I have this right set up. Thank you, broadcasting. So these are the pieces of the delevering portion of the policy itself. So, um, continuing as directed by the City Commission to apply savings from the 2020 debt restructuring. Um, so going back in the memory banks, in early 2020, we came to the commission and said, we'd like to perform these transactions. And as a result of those transactions, we would have savings for the utility and its debt service. We'd like to take those savings and apply it to essentially either a debt reduction or a debt defeesence or not issuing as much debt. Um, we've combined that with the 2020 POB issuance in the same year. When the utility is projecting out the capital needs, it's typically 50% of debt issuance, so bonds, and 50% of what's called UPIF, it's Utility Plant Improvement Fund, which is, um, funded by current year operating dollars. So we're not issuing 100% debt, it's 50% debt for the capital infrastructure needs for that year and future years, but also 50% of internal equity. Um, we are looking to shift that number from 50% up higher for UPIF, which will help with the, with the delevering, defeesence, debt reduction piece. And we'll talk to the commission more when we start to go through the 2024 budget process. Um, when cash balance levels exceed the targets established in the City Commission approved cash balance policy, um, those dollars that are above those target levels would be moved to debt defeesence, debt reduction. Uh, the utility came to the commission February of 2019 to actually establish a cash balance reserve policy. It sets floors as, as far as the cash levels that are necessary to operate the utility. With the commission's, uh, support and approval with the multi-year base rate increases and the GFT reductions, in future years, those reserves should turn positive. So in the water, wastewater and gas systems, they're already positive, electric and telecommunications, they are not. But as they're turning positive, those funds get pulled into this debt defeesence or debt reduction program. Um, and then grant reimbursements, we have a, a grant program that's being built up at the utility, and if we receive a grant fund, we could take what would normally be spent in capital and apply that to this debt defeesence. I think at the end of all this, kind of like the bottom line is the plan that the commission put in place, working with the utility, it's actually starting to come to fruition, and we're codifying it in the debt policy itself. Um, there's a section that's been added, which is the credit metrics, and I apologize for the smallness of this, but there's a, a lot of information in there. These are codifying, uh, minimum credit metrics at the utility. Um, we would like to strive for a upgrade in our credit ratings, and so that's what this is designed to do, is to get us there over time. So with that, I will pause.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for all the work on this. Um, and, uh, it's sort of been a long journey, but, uh, I think this is such an important step forward, um, to really give consistent direction from this body to you and your staff when you bring us, um, whether they're debt issuances or budget recommendations, um, or amendments, um, that they're tied to a specific goal and policy to achieve that goal. So I, I do, um, think this is very helpful, and I know they will be looked upon fondly by our credit rating agencies, um, that they'll have that consistency and, and sort of foundation. Um, are there any questions from the commission? I know you've had a chance to discuss this with staff, um, leading up to this. Okay, is there a motion? Commissioner Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I move, uh, staff recommendations.
Second.
Motion is second, that we approve the recommendation, uh, to update the debt management policy. Um, Madam Clerk, anybody signed up to speak? Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, Madam Clerk, I believe we're to the item that was pulled from consent.
That's correct. On page three, D7, Gainesville Police Department radio purchase with the recommendation that the commission approved a Motorola portable radio lease purchase and authorize the city manager to execute a contract for such, subject to approval by the city attorney's office as to formal legality.
Hey, Madam Manager.
Good morning. I'm not quite sure Commissioner, um, Desmond Walker, what the question is, but this item, uh, Chief is here, we are trying to negotiate a contract as we speak. The funding, this is for radios using the same brand, I believe that we've used, um, you know, in the past, which is Motorola. Um, there's a little over $700,000 allocated in the budget that was approved by the commission on the 22nd of September. It was the, uh, it's a three-year contract. Obviously, the intent is for future years for that same amount to be allocated to complete the cost of the contract, but we do have funds in the 23 budget to accommodate that. And again, the contract is still in negotiation. Chief?
Mr. Mayor, Commission, that the radios that we have now have reached, uh, 185 of those have reached the end of cycle, in the life cycle, and we have to transition to a newer radio. Uh, we are, we want to make sure our personnel on the same platform, particularly the SWAR personnel on the same platform. Uh, these radios have advanced encryption, also have, uh, location, GPS-type functions, uh, has a lot of amenities that we don't currently have on the radios. Uh, but more importantly, we want to make sure that when we send our officers out with the radio, that they function, because if they get in a position where it's not working, it could be a life-threatening situation. Uh, so it was time for those radios to be, uh, replaced, and we put forth the request to get it done. Uh, we thought we had a little more time, um, you know, we could take the risk and go out and continue using what we have. Uh, I think at least 185 of those are 10 years, uh, or older, and that just is not something that, uh, willing to accept that kind of risk on right now unnecessarily.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, uh, City Manager Curry, and thank you, Chief Scott. Um, my question was simply just a point of clarity. In the backup, I just noticed in the explanation section that it says that the request was for the transfer to facilitate program of miscellaneous equipment purchases, but it sounds like you are specifically looking to deal with just radios?
Yeah, no, this is specifically for the, um, radios.
The wording, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
The wording that the commissioner is referring to is in the backup, it does say miscellaneous. I'm, I'm going to make an assumption, you can clarify that that is associated with the radio.
Yeah, the miscellaneous would be the software that's attached to it. Uh, you purchase the radio, then there's the software that, that's used for encryption, uh, software that's also used to help, uh, provide other functions like the geography locations and things of those kinds. So the radios themselves, I think, are 600-plus thousand a year. The software that goes with that is a 121,000, and that's something that's provided free the first year, and then we have to pay for it to subsequent years.
Sorry. That's how they get you.
Okay. Um, thank you, Chief Scott.
You're welcome.
I, I did get that clarity there, that all of these monies will be spent on the radios and the associated, um, items to that.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Um, good question. Uh, is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the recommendation, purchase the radios. Uh, any members of the public side up to speak to this? Okay, back to the commission. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Um, okay, I think, uh, we now have a commission comment. Oh, we don't have a commission comment, but Commissioner Ward, uh, did you have a question?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wondered if we could move, um, a couple of the items from the afternoon up to, because to keep the afternoon from getting overcrowded, since we have a little bit of time.
I hear ya. My only concern is we didn't do an agenda adoption. If anybody was gonna come to speak to that and expecting to come after one, they might be disappointed or even angry. Um, yeah, um, I, I, I hear ya. I, I do think a lot of our afternoon items are, um, gonna be pretty quick, um, but a couple could take some time, so we'll do the best we can. Um, okay, uh, with that then, uh, having finished our business for this morning, we will be in recess until 1 o'clock.
We do have quorum. It's quickly approaching the dais. And we have it. I'll call this meeting back to order. Thank you all. This is the afternoon portion of our regular October 20th meeting. And so, Madam Clerk, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, our first item is early public comment, and we have no signups at this time.
Okay.
Our next item is general public comment, and we have Ms. Karen Garen here to pre-comment.
Okay. Ms. Karen, good to see you.
Is there an overhead projector available?
There is. Just lay it down. Yep, they'll get you going. There you go.
Oh, that's nice. That's better than a shoulder. My name's Karen Garen. I'm a wildlife biologist, a field biology tech consultant, and a former retired biology professor. And I've been a resident of Gainesville and Alachua County for 40 years. And I am here to speak to you about Gainesville's nature parks. I have a short description and a couple of proposals I'd like to make, and then I'd like to get some feedback from you, if you don't mind. I've been affiliated with our flagship Morningside Nature Center since the mid-eighties, back in the days of Pat Ashton, Gary Paul, and Larry Johnson. And then, this is my neck of the woods. So, for 35 years, I've been advocating for preservation of the biodiversity here. This is the last best example of upland habitat left in this whole part of the city. And in, I've fought off skateboard parks and lacrosse fields, just advocating for preservation of this park. I've seen gopher tortoises come and go. In 2016, The Girl's Place made a proposal to put in a lacrosse field there. And then they revised that, and some other things happened. But meanwhile, in 2016, this nature park, this part of the city park reverted, this small section of the park reverted to nature operations, and it became a nature preserve. There's wire grass there. There's longleaf pine and turkey oak and red oak and the live, sand live oak. And I've seen it deteriorate under a management policy that didn't address the needs of this. It was doing mowing in the summertime, impacting the wildflowers. And I'd been working with the city for 35 years to try and preserve this park. Anyhow, so that's kind of beside the point. But how many people here in the last year have visited one of the city's nature parks? Wow, I'm impressed. I'm really impressed. I thought it was going to be like maybe two of you, but anyhow.
Yeah, so Ms. Karen, I'm afraid your time has expired, and I have to be equal with everybody, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would, maybe we can schedule a meeting.
How much time did I have?
Three.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
It's okay, but if you want to schedule a follow-up meeting, I'd love to talk with you more about this. And then we do have a meeting, a longer meeting and our General Policy Committee meeting coming up to discuss wild spaces, public places, and what sort of projects and how dollars might be spent if that does get renewed in November. And so, we could invite you to that meeting as well to talk about sort of nature parks and how that fits into our plan overall. So, if you do, if you would like to schedule a follow-up meeting with me, just talk to my assistant, which is right next door. I'll tell her to come out and get you.
Okay.
And then we can go from there.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, you're good. You're good. It goes quick when you're talking about something you love. Yeah, so Betsy, if you can hear me back there, if you could help Ms. Karen schedule an appointment, I'd love it.
When is the Wild Spaces Public Place?
Is that the?
Is that today?
No, 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 no. It's.
Okay, I'll follow up with that.
First. Yeah, so it'll be the fourth Thursday in November? So, that's not Thanksgiving?
Wait, dang.
So, the first December, or the second December, I'm sorry, second Thursday, December. Is that right? December 8th. Thank you, yeah. And Ms. Kristin there, I'll help you schedule an appointment. Thank you, Ms. Karen. Okay. Madam Clerk. Okay, sir, I just want to make, are you here for public comment, general public comment? Yes. Okay, very good. So, then on to our next item, please.
Okay, our next item is ordinance number 211415. Land use change of 25.38 acres of property located west of Interstate 75 and north of Southwest 8th Avenue. An ordinance of the City of Gainesville, Florida amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan by changing the land use category of approximately 25.38 acres of property generally located west of I-75 and north of Southwest 8th Avenue is more specifically described in this ordinance from Alachua County, high-density residential and Alachua County medium-density residential to mixed, to urban mixed-use, providing directions to the city manager, providing a severability clause, a repealing clause, and an effective date.
Mr. Chan, welcome.
Hi, thank you so much. Good afternoon, City Commissioner, Mr. Mayor. My name is Nathaniel Chan. I'm a planner for the City of Gainesville Department of Sustainable Development. This is petition LD 2236 LUC or ordinance 211415, a future land use amendment of the subject area west of I-75 and north of Southwest 8th Avenue. So, if you'll remember, the proposed area for land use change was recently annexed into the city on September 15th, 2022, and is approximately 25 acres. Per state statute in the comprehensive plan, properties must be given city land use and zoning per annexation into the city. So, the subject area is currently vacant. There's Alacha County Medium Density Residential and High Density Residential currently. Here are the surrounding future land use categories. There's City of Gainesville Commercial to the north, Alachua County Commercial to the southwest. That's a convenience store on Southwest 8th Avenue. Alachua County High Density Residential and Medium Density Residential also surround the subject property. Right, and here is the proposed future land use categories on the map. So, for both parcels, we are proposing urban mixed-use future land use. The urban mixed-use future land use category is described as off, as allowing a residential, office, and retail as standalone uses or mixed-use development. As I said, surrounding area includes a mix of uses, including commercial, multifamily, et cetera. The proposal meets all of the review criteria for land use change outlined in Section 30-3.13 of the Land Development Code. And more details on the future land use change criteria can be found on the staff report. On August 25th, 2022, the City Plan Board recommended approval of this petition. And today, staff recommends approval of petition LD 2236 LUC or ordinance 211415. Thank you. Happy to answer your questions.
I think first that we have Commissioner Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Bertin. I move ordinance number 211415. I'm adoption reading by title only.
So, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, do we have any comment? Nope. Is it just a vote? Roll call?
Commissioner Ariola. Commissioner Chestnut. Commissioner Sacco.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan Walker. Commissioner Ward.
Aye.
Commissioner Hay Santos.
Aye.
And Mayor Poe.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Next up, please.
Our next item is the second reading of ordinance number 2022-385, quasi-judicial rezoning of 23.55 acres of property located at the 2100 block of Southeast Hawthorne Road, South Side. An ordinance of the City of Gainesville, Florida amending the zoning map atlas by rezoning approximately 23.55 acres of property generally located at the 2100 block of Southeast Hawthorne Road. South Side is more specifically described in this ordinance from Urban 3, Urban 4, and 6 to Public Services and Operations to Urban 8, providing directions to the city manager, providing a severability clause, providing a repealing clause, and an effective date.
Thank you. This is the second reading. Commissioner Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I move ordinance 2022-385 on second reading by title only.
Motion is second. Commissioner Chestnut? Oh, right on. Thank you. Appreciate that. Madam Clerk, anybody sign up to speak to this? Okay, then on to the commission for roll call vote.
Commissioner Sacco.
Aye.
Commissioner Hay Santos.
Aye.
Commissioner Ward.
Aye.
Commissioner Ariola. Commissioner Chestnut.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Nay.
And Mayor Poe.
All right, that motion passes 6-1 with Duncan Walker in dissent.
Next ordinance, 211331A, text change amending transit rezoning criteria. An ordinance of the City of Gainesville, Florida amending Section 30-3.14 of the Land Development Code regarding rezoning criteria, providing directions to the codifier, providing a severability clause, a repealing clause, and an effective date.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I move ordinance 211331A on second reading by title only.
Second.
Motion is second to adopt the proposed ordinance on second reading. Anybody sign up to speak to this? Okay, roll call vote.
Commissioner Ward. I'm sorry, was that? Thank you. Commissioner Chestnut.
Nay.
Commissioner Sacco.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Nay.
Commissioner Ariola.
Aye.
Commissioner Hay Santos.
Aye.
And Mayor Poe.
All right, that motion passes 4-3 with Chestnut, Ward, and Duncan Walker in dissent.
Ordinance number 210572, adoption of Public Works Design Manual. An ordinance of the City of Gainesville, Florida adopting the City of Gainesville Engineering Design and Construction Manual 2022 Edition in accordance with Section 30-1.6 of the Land Development Code, providing a severability clause, a repealing clause, and an immediate effective date.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Santos.
Thank you. Mayor, I move ordinance 210572 on second reading by title only. And also request that the city manager put some press release about the changes of bike facilities. These are some major changes to our city and building out kind of our visions and our goals.
Okay, motion is second that we adopt our ordinance on second reading and ask for some sort of community education and awareness be made to these changes. Anybody signed up to speak? Okay, roll call vote.
Commissioner Hay Santos.
Aye.
Commissioner Ward. Commissioner Chestnut.
Aye.
Commissioner Ariola. Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Aye.
Commissioner Sacco.
Aye.
And Mayor Poe.
All right, that motion passes unanimously. Next item, please.
Next item is ordinance number 2022-557, Gainesville Community Reinvestment Area Boundary. An ordinance of the City of Gainesville, Florida amending Section 2-406 Gainesville Community Reinvestment Area, City Department Powers, definitions of the Code of Ordinances to expand the real property included within the Gainesville Community Reinvestment Area to include certain real property located to the northwest of the intersection of Northeast 8th Avenue and Northeast Waldo Road as further described by this ordinance, providing directions to the codifier, providing a severability clause or repealing clause, and an immediate effective date.
Thank you. Commissioner Sacco. Commissioner Sacco, I'm sorry, I had her light on. Commissioner, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. I move ordinance number 2022557. By title only and second reading.
There you go. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is a second. Thank you for all the enthusiasm to approve this. It is important. Anybody signed up to speak? Okay, roll call vote.
Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Aye.
Commissioner Ariola. Commissioner Sacco.
Aye.
Commissioner Chestnut.
Aye.
Commissioner Ward.
Aye.
Commissioner Hay Santos.
Aye.
And Mayor Poe.
All right, that motion passes unanimously. Next item, please.
Second reading of ordinance 211332. And, excuse me, quasi-judicial rezoning of 1.0 acres of property located at 4232 Northwest 6th Street. An ordinance of the City of Gainesville, Florida amending the zoning map atlas by rezoning approximately 1.08 acres of property generally located at 4232 Northwest 6th Street is more specifically described in this ordinance from planned development to general office, providing directions to the city manager, providing a severability clause, a repealing clause, and an effective date.
Thank you. Commissioner Sacco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if I could get this to work for me, I move ordinance number 211332 by, second reading by title only.
Second.
Motion is second to adopt the proposed ordinance. Anybody signed up? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Chestnut.
Aye.
Commissioner Hay Santos.
Aye.
Commissioner Sacco.
Aye.
Commissioner Ariola. Commissioner Ward.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Aye.
And Mayor Poe.
All right, that message passes unanimously. Next item, please.
Next item is ordinance number 2111478, quasi-judicial rezoning of 13.943 acres of property located northwest of the intersection of Southwest Williston Road and Southwest 13th Street and west of Southwest 13th Street and south of Southwest 36th Place. An ordinance of the City of Gainesville, Florida amending the zoning map atlas by rezoning approximately 13.943 acres of property generally located northwest of the intersection of Southwest Williston Road and Southwest 13th Street and west of Southwest 13th Street and south of Southwest 36th Place is more specifically described in this ordinance from Alachua County Business Retail Sales and Services, Highway Oriented Business, and Hospital Medical to City of Gainesville Urban 7, providing directions to the manager, providing a severability clause, a repealing clause, and an effective date.
Thank you. Commissioner Sacco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move ordinance 211147A on second reading by title only.
Motion is second to adopt the proposed ordinance. Anybody signed up to speak? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Ariola. Commissioner Chestnut.
Aye.
Commissioner Sacco.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Aye.
Commissioner Ward.
Aye.
Commissioner Hay Santos.
Aye.
And Mayor Poe.
All right, that motion passes unanimously. Next item, please.
Next item is ordinance number 2022577, amending Charter 26, excuse me, Charter 26, Micro Mobility Services. An ordinance of the City of Gainesville, Florida amending Section 26-196 of the City Code of Ordinances related to hours of operation of micro-mobility services, providing directions to the codifier, providing a severability clause or repealing clause, and an effective date.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I move ordinance 2022-577 on second reading by title only.
Second.
Motion is second to adopt the proposed ordinance. Anybody signed up to speak? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Sacco.
Aye.
Commissioner Hay Santos.
Aye.
Commissioner Ward.
Aye.
Commissioner Ariola. Commissioner Chestnut.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Aye.
And Mayor Poe.
All right, that motion passes unanimously. On to first readings. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. First reading of ordinance number 211417, quasi-judicial rezoning of 25.38 acres of property located west of I-75 and north of Southwest 8th Avenue. An ordinance of the City of Gainesville, Florida amending the zoning map atlas by rezoning approximately 25.38 acres of property generally located west of I-75 and north of Southwest 8th Avenue is more specifically described in this ordinance from Alachua County Multifamily Residential and Alachua County Manufactured Mobile Home Park to Urban 6, providing directions to the city manager, providing a severability clause or repealing clause, and an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Chan, welcome back.
Hi, good afternoon. That was a lot of reading really fast. So, thank you again. This is the accompanying rezoning petition for the last item I presented. So, LD 2237 ZON, a rezoning of the subject area west of I-75, north of Southwest 8th Avenue, ordinance 211417. Again, this area was annexed on September 15th, 2022, and must be given city land use and zoning. The existing, or the property is 25 acres, and existing zoning includes Alachua County Multifamily Residential and Alachua County Manufacturing Mobile Home, RM. Here are the surrounding zoning districts around the subject area. So, there's City of Gainesville General Business District to the north, that convenience store to the southwest that has Alachua County Business Retail Sales and Services, BR. And again, there's surrounding Alachua County Residential Multifamily, R3, and R2A. And then to the west, there's the Alachua County Manufactured Mobile Home Park, RM. Here is the proposed zoning districts on the map. So, for both of the parcels, we are proposing U6 zoning, that is the implementing zoning category for the, or one of them for the urban mixed-use future land use district. So, U6 zoning allows for a variety of residential, non-residential, commercial office, et cetera, on the subject property. And that is pretty much it. City Plan Board recommended approval of this petition on August 25th, 2022. Staff reviewed the petition as well and found that it met the Land Development Code, Section 30-3.14 of the Land Development Code. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chan. Commissioner Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I move ordinance 211417 on first reading by title only.
Second.
Motion is second that we adopt the proposed ordinance on first reading. Anybody signed up to speak? Okay, roll call vote.
Commissioner Ward.
Aye.
Commissioner Chestnut.
Aye.
Commissioner Sacco.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan Walker. Commissioner Ariola. Commissioner Hay Santos.
Aye.
And Mayor Poe.
All right, that motion passes unanimously. Next item, please.
First reading of ordinance number 2022600, amending the City of Gainesville Sexual Offender and Sexual Predator Ordinance Residency Prohibition Regarding Applicability, Lord, Applicability and Geographic Area. An ordinance of the City of Gainesville, Florida amending Section 17-33 through 17-34 of the Code of Ordinances by amending the residency prohibition for persons convicted of certain sex offenses, providing a severability clause, a repealing clause, and an immediate effective date.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ne.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we discussed at the last meeting, this ordinance amendment simply amends the current ordinance that's been in place since 2005 in two respects, both of which to make it consistent operationally with a similar state statute, which prohibits the residency of people convicted of certain sexual offenses from residing within a certain number of feet from schools, playgrounds, and daycare centers. The two changes, the ordinance here would restate the intent, the non-cumulative regulatory intent of this ordinance to protect children and protect against recidivism, recidivist acts by past sex offenders. And it would serve to add an operational date of November 28th, 2005, sort of an application date by which an offense would have had to have occurred for the prohibition to apply. And it also would change the size of the radius around these protected places from 2,500 feet to 1,000 feet. Again, both of which to make it more consistent operationally with the state statute.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Ne. Commissioner Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I move ordinance 2022-600 on first reading by title only.
Okay, motion is second to adopt the proposed ordinance. Anybody signed up to speak to this? Okay, back to the commissions. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Hay Santos.
Aye.
Commissioner Ward.
Aye.
Commissioner Chestnut.
Aye.
Commissioner Ariola. Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Aye.
Commissioner Sacco.
Aye.
And Mayor Poe.
All right, that motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, I believe we're to commission comment. All right, anybody have anything at this time? Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just stunned. That's, I, by my count, what, 10 items, plus public comment, plus early public comment, and my member comment in less than a half an hour. Kudos.
You're welcome. There's a song out there, "Gonna miss me when I'm gone." I had nothing to do with that, obviously.
Mr. Mayor, you just gave a preview for my farewell song.
That is a real song, right? I didn't make it up. Okay, well, everybody then, enjoy the beautiful afternoon we have out there. We will be in recess and reconvene at 5:30 for proclamations. We are in recess. Okay, good evening. We're going to call this meeting back to order. Regular city commission meeting, October 20th, 2022. And we've got an exciting unveiling here in just a moment, but first, Madam Clerk, our first order of business.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
So if you please stand me if you're willing and able for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated. All right, Madam Clerk.
Our first item of the evening is a special recognition for UnLitter Mural and Recognition 2022.
Okay, thank you. So, so many great things that happen start with just a little tiny nudge, right? In fact, there's, economists want to hold mobile price based on that theory. But what seems like forever ago, in the midst of COVID, I got an email from a really awesome group of people and then led by Shannon, right? And they had this idea to bring awareness to our community concerning environmental issues and especially plastic waste, and asked if they could work with the city on this project that they had. So I said, "It sounds great. Let's see, you know, how we can help and be partners in this." And tonight is the culmination of all of those efforts and activities. And so, in just a moment, I'm going to invite Carissa up here, who was the city sort of liaison and, sort of champion of this project. But I do want to encourage all of you that are here or that might be watching to, they're going to be doing some tabling a little bit later, so you can learn more about their organization and efforts, if you want to go out and check that out. And also, I'm sure they will share their website and social media information if you want to follow up and learn more and get involved, because it's a great group for a really important cause. And I think you're going to be really excited when you see the result of all of their work. So with that, Carissa, would you like to tell us a little bit more about what we're about to look at?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Carissa Raskin, Assistant Director of Strategy Planning Innovation. So what you have before you, I have not seen, no one has seen yet, except for the fabulous group behind you. They have worked for a very long time, months and months, collecting thousands upon thousands of bottle caps from our community in efforts to support the Zero Waste Initiative and really bring awareness to what the city is striving to do together with our community. It is an excellent depiction in my mind of true collaboration and how we are in City Hall, working together with our community to bring about what our mutual goals are. And I certainly didn't have very much to do with it at all. I will recognize Shannon Sawtell, who is the Director of UnLitter, which is a local nonprofit organization that worked very hard to convene all of the wonderful people and more that you see behind me, to put together a mural which will be hung in City Hall outside of these doors above our kiosk. It will be hung there by our facilities team and remain there for several months. And we're just extremely grateful and excited. I'm so excited to see it. So Shannon, do you want to come up and say anything and then maybe have the unveiling take place?
Well, Shannon's coming up. We do have rules in our chambers for no cheers or jeers, so we maintain a civil environment. But we do have one exception, when we do proclamations and recognitions. And so there will be an appropriate time where we can all voice our support and excitement over this project. So Shannon, yeah, please tell us a little bit more.
Hello, fantastic to meet you. My name is Shannon Sawtell. I'm the Director of UnLitter here at the University of Florida. For those of you who haven't heard of our organization, we are a nonprofit that started here in 2016, right out of UF, believe it or not. And we have the founder here today. She came all the way from Israel, so we were very excited to have her.
Right.
Another thing about this mural, we collected all of the caps from the Gainesville community. One thing we wanted to bring attention to is that although we have so many fantastic initiatives, like the Zero Waste Ordinance, the Plastic Ordinances, there is still so much work to be done specifically with recycling here in America in general. So plastic water bottle caps are not recyclable in the Alachua County or in most places here in Florida. So in order to get the most amount of colors and design options as possible, we collected 75,000 caps for about a year and a half. So believe it or not, probably some people on this livestream donated caps at some point, some way or another. And I'm very excited to show it to you all. The mural is a depiction of a sunset at Payne's Prairie, so we wanted to keep it really in the community here. But we are very excited. Our nonprofit has spread rapidly throughout the United States. And being our home here in Gainesville, it's very exciting to be here. So without further ado, I'm going to reveal, this is the first time anyone outside of UnLitter has seen it, so I hope you all really love it.
And why don't you let us just, yeah, let us, we want to see it too, so let us just come around there.
We don't want to go without this fantastic team, so please thank everyone that's been here today. We have Maida, who is our Litter Art Coordinator, that managed this whole project.
If you play any part of this, can you like wave your arms and make some noise?
If you want to hear more about our organization, our socials are @unlitteruf and @unlitter. So U-N-L-I-T-T-E-R U-F. You can find our Instagram, website, and everything like that. And if you can provide any other information, please come speak to me after you ask me those questions.
And I know all of you heard her, all of you at home, you'll have to like, say that again for people at home.
Sorry, I forgot about the microphone. Our nonprofit has a website, unlitter.org, U-N-L-I-T-T-E-R dot org. You can also find us on our social media pages, @unlitteruf. So Instagram and any of that. We have a bunch of upcoming events in addition to cleanups and UnLitter Your Mind Yoga events, so please definitely check those out. Open to non-students as well, of course.
Excellent. And so I have this certificate to present to the organization UnLitter, and it reads, "For your efforts to improve environmental sustainability and stewardship via neighborhood engagement in the City of Gainesville, Florida," we have our official seal. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Can we sign for a team photo?
Yes. Come on up, yeah. Yes, Shannon.
That's the only one we can follow.
Well made.
This is awesome.
Come on in, yes.
This is awesome.
Like the paparazzi.
Don't, don't stop smiling.
Ever. Don't ever stop smiling. Thank you. All right, thank you. Thank you so much. Great job, great job. And as Shannon said, or Carissa, I forget, but it'll be outside in the lobby of City Hall here for some time. And so please stop down and check it out. And please go follow UnLitter so you can learn more about their efforts. We're just going to pause for a second for everybody to clear out. Incidental music? Thank you. All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. We just appreciate it. Come back anytime. You can stay for the rest of the meeting. I always remind people, they're welcome to stay for the other items, but they always leave. Okay, Madam Clerk, our next item, please.
Our next item is early public comment, and we have Alex Posen sign up.
Okay, welcome.
Thanks. I'm Alex Posen. I'm speaking on the parking ordinance. When we speak of free things, there's an implicit understanding that society will bear these costs, generally through taxes. Many of these things are of great benefit to society. Free healthcare, free education, free lunches for schoolchildren. Parking, however, has a great cost to society. It is simply a terrible use of land. Acres of asphalt are heat islands and frankland pleasant to look at. Free parking encourages driving instead of biking or walking, and that is not what any government that is at all serious about climate change should do. Estimates vary, but there's likely enough parking in America to cover the entire state of New Jersey. While those who can afford to and are able to drive get a free place to put their private goods, those who can't are forced to subsidize them. A parking space is not a cheap, surprisingly not cheap to build. The average surface space costs is shocking $5,000 to $10,000 to build. And somebody has to eat those costs, and it's those who don't drive. This disproportionately falls on the poor and disabled. Forty percent of American adults with a disability don't drive at all, compared to 10% of those without them. Vast parking lots are cruel to non-drivers with physical disabilities. Forcing people with mobility issues to walk or roll through acres of hot asphalt using energy they might not have, staring at the rows of painted lines that increase the cost of goods at their store, at the store, is just wrong. The big secret of city planning is that parking minimums are just made up. There's no rhyme or reason to any of the numbers. Can anyone honestly tell me why hotels in Gainesville, why hotels and motels require five spaces, plus one space for each guest room, plus 75% required spaces for restaurants, retail outlets, and other accessory uses? Author of the high cost of free parking, Donald Shoup, has compared the practice of deciding what minimums should be to bloodletting. But at least that pseudoscience killed only one, killed only the patient rather than the entire earth. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, anybody else? Okay, next then, our next item.
Our next item is resolution, Commissioner Reyna Sacco, Non-Bonding Resolution to an Act, HR 1976 Medicare for All Act of 2021, with the recommendation that the commission approve the resolution.
Hey, Commissioner Sacco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Omi. So this came about from multiple years of conversation at this point with our friends at the Alachua County Labor Coalition. We have some of them with us today who will give a little more background about the, about the act and why it's so important. But really, one of the things that inspired me, and I shared with Candy and Gabby earlier, is when I had to use the ER a couple weeks ago, I looked up if my insurance would cover it. I was facing potential hypovoleptic shock, and I had to stop to look at my insurance booklet. There are, you know, basic standards of human care that is a right for every person. And at this point, we are not really meeting that. And that is a great shame. But hopefully, Congress can see this and see that this commission supports it, that the City of Gainesville supports it, and maybe that other cities support it, and finally, you know, walk it the last few steps it needs to go. But with that, I will let Candy and Gabby tell us a bit more.
Thank you so much. My name is Candy Birch, and this is Gabby Gross. Both of us are Gainesville residents. We are both members of Medicare for All Florida and the Alachua County Labor Coalition. We've been working together since May to gain support for this resolution, as Gabby will discuss in a few minutes. And I thank you so, so much for allowing us to come and talk about this important issue, discuss the Medicare for All resolution. It calls for a national, for our national legislators to pass a national Medicare for All Act, especially, which is called HR 1976. Gabby will talk about the bill itself, and then I will discuss how residents in the United States and here in Gainesville would benefit from the passage.
Thank you. Oh, gentlemen, could we get a quick technological fix up here? One sec. We're just going to fix the microphone real quick.
Okay.
Should I put the first?
It's right there. It's on. Yeah. It should be.
The little thingamabobber fell off. I think that's a technical term.
Did I do something?
That's fine, that's fine.
You don't need it?
No, I mean, it's good, okay.
Okay, so 60% of all residents support Medicare for All. And I've been collecting signatures, and hardly anybody refused me. Everybody was willing to sign without even asking many questions. We got about 370 in all in a short space of time. That was very easy to do. So what's in this act is healthcare for all residents. So when you come into the world, from the time you come into the world until the time you leave it, you will be covered. And there will be no cost to you, although, of course, the cost of running it. And what is covered is everything that we think of as healthcare. In addition to these basic ones up there, there's also reproductive services, including abortion, if that becomes legal, prescription drugs, medical devices. And these will all be free at the point of service. And... So it's, will be much cheaper, much less expensive than current Medicare, because waste will be eliminated. There will be just one provider, one payer, single payer, and there will not be, there's insurance companies who each have their different procedures and make different requirements of their doctors, and have specialized, have groups, or you have to pay more if you go into another group. There will be none of that. The financing will be all from taxation. And that scares some people. They don't want to pay more taxes. But in fact, only 95% of people will pay less in taxes than they currently do in premiums and other out-of-pocket expenses. And because administrative costs are usually resulting in cutting, in laying off people, there's going to be a provision for insurance, a provision for insurance workers who are displaced. So for five years, there will be, as a fund for displaced insurance workers. So that's, that's, that's the most important issue. There's lots of others like it. You can choose your own doctor. There'll be no discrimination. But these are the essential facts of HR 1976.
Thank you.
I appreciate, I hope you appreciate the fact that the two of us are kind of, we have, we've been working together without actually being in the room together a lot of this. So I'm going to really try very hard to, to go forward in a very fast way. There's just, the other, the resolution that you saw has a bunch of wheresses and wheresses and wheresses and stuff like that. And in just 10 minutes, I don't know if I can get through it all, but I'm just going to give you the highlights of it because it's so important to us. So here we go. One of the things about, the most convincing arguments of Medicare for All are listed right here on this slide. Study after study has documented that healthcare in the United States is the most expensive among peer countries. The United States spends 16% of its gross domestic product on healthcare, for goodness sake. Peer nations like Canada, Great Britain, France, Germany, Switzerland, they spend between nine and 12. The United States spends 16% of its GDP. According to the Kaiser Health Foundation, two in five adults enrolled in employer-provided health coverage reported difficulty affording their own healthcare or their insurance costs. And for all that money being spent, the United States has a lower life expectancy. At 77 years in the United States, we are last among the G7 countries where life expectancies are in the 80s. In addition, the United States has, and this is heartbreaking, the highest chronic disease burden, a problem that early accessible healthcare could help eliminate. And finally, the most heartbreaking of all is the infant mortality here in the United States, where we have 5.4 deaths per 100, I mean, for 1,000 live births. I don't know. Again, we're last in the G7 countries. So we... So we know that families are suffering. I think Rena actually kind of brought that up. Families are bearing the burden of all of this. What is the percentage of your income that goes to health insurance? Is it over 10%? Could you afford a catastrophic disease, a diagnosis? Would you have to rely on your credit card or your family to afford healthcare? I'm not sure about that. So, here's the rub. The rub is that ordinary families are struggling, but health insurance, healthcare companies are experiencing record profits. I am shocked to learn that the five highest earners in the Fortune 500 are healthcare companies, CVS and UnitedHealth. Sure, the shareholders are happy about that. They're in the top five of the Fortune 500, but not so much those who are shouldering crushing medical expenses. So did you know that a high percentage of gains that are routinely denied or upheld are upheld after appeal? Counting on people to accept the first denial is just another way that companies boost their profits. So, we just know that Medicare is a good way to take care of that. As you might notice, Gabby and I are currently very grateful recipients of Medicare. We have routine and other necessary healthcare delivered by doctors that we pick with no out-of-pocket expense. Every American deserves that savings, and Medicare for All does that at a lower cost. So many Gainesvillians, I guess that's how you say it, would benefit from Medicare for All. The poor, 30% in Gainesville. People of color, 35% in Gainesville. The uninsured, that number 23,000 is really for Alachua County, so that means 12,000 people would benefit from Medicare for All in Gainesville. Young people like those kids that just left, and businesses would no longer have to worry about healthcare plan selection, educating their workers, administrating all of that stuff. So all of that money could go to better wages and better working conditions. So the benefits are clear. There's no doubt about it. Workers can seek employment wherever they want to go because they don't have to worry about losing their health insurance. People don't have to delay their healthcare because of the cost. That statistic that's on that slide that says 16% of diabetics either reduce or forego their diabetic insulin is just astounding to me, and it's just wrong. Medical debt and bankruptcy would go away. In the past five years, half of these people say that they have gone into debt because of medical and dental bills. Remember, 95% of us would pay less than they are paying now when you add up the copays, the premiums, and the deductibles. So, the Congressional Budget Office says this is what could happen: higher wages, increased household disposable income, improved worker health and longevity, and lower administrative waste. So almost at the end. I, can you read all of that? So all of these cities, all of these cities have adopted Medicare for All resolutions since 2018, just five years. There are 100 of them, over 100 of them, and just this month, Atlanta, Georgia just adopted a Medicare for All resolution. Tampa, St. Petersburg, Key West, and Florida have adopted the Medicare for All resolution. Why? Because circumstances here in the United States have reached crisis proportions. We must let our national leaders know that they need to gather up the political will, like you are right now, to insist that everyone in America, everyone in America, has access to high-quality healthcare. Expanding that quality of healthcare to all residents, cradle to grave, is just as powerful a public good as education and public safety. So we hope that you will help us join in this important conversation and support the passage of this Medicare resolution. Our children, our grandchildren, the people of Gainesville and America, they really deserve it, and I thank you so much for giving us this time, so.
All right. Thank you so much, both, for being with us and sharing all of that. Commissioner Sacco, turn back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the city commission approve the non-binding resolution to enact H.R. 1976 Medicare for All Act of 2021. There's no actual number on it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to adopt the proposed resolution. Madam Clerk, do you have anybody signed up for this? Okay. Then we'll move back to commission. This is a non-binding resolution, so we'll just go to a voice vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, you two, and everybody else. Thanks for sharing it with us and bringing it to us. All right, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Our next item is a first budget amendment to the fiscal year 2023 General Government Financial and Operating Plan Budget, Resolution Number 2022-622, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Gainesville, Florida relating to its general government budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022, and ending September 30, 2023, amending Resolution Number 2022-265 by making certain adjustments to the General Government Financial and Operating Plan Budget and providing an immediate effective date.
Okay, Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the first amendment to the FY 2023 budget, and it reflects the start of the carry-forward process for encumbrances and expenditures previously approved by the commission in prior fiscal years which were not completed in FY 2022, were not completed in FY 2022, and are needed in the FY 2023 budget, which was approved by the commission on September of 22. Specifically, this amendment carries forward salary contingency and the general fund, projects and programs, and the special revenue fund, grant appropriations, and capital projects. These appropriations are needed so that departments can continue to implement projects funded by capital fund, grants, and other restricted revenue sources from prior fiscal years. These are preliminary estimates, and we will continue to process the financial closing of fiscal 2022 as we move forward. There will be other carry-forward adjustments that will be needed, and those will be presented to the city commission at the appropriate time. In addition to this budget amendment, it also includes a housekeeping item to update our general ledger and workday mapping for the Department of Juvenile Justice and Community Support Programs as approved by the city commission at the second public budget hearing for fiscal 2023 on September 22, 2022. And Ms. Susan Boyd is here as well to answer any additional questions that the commission may have on this item.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Manager. Commissioner Hay Santos.
Thank you. May I move Resolution 2022-622?
Second.
Motion, second, to adopt the proposed budget amendment resolution. Any members of the public? Okay. Then this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Chestnut?
Aye.
Commissioner Hay Santos?
Aye.
Commissioner Sacco?
Aye.
Commissioner Areola?
Aye.
Commissioner Ward?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan Walker?
Aye.
And Mayor Poe?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. Okay, next item, please.
Next item is a business discussion, V1, adoption of the 2022 Incentives and Recommendations Report, with the recommendation that the commission accept AHAC's 2022 Incentives and Recommendations Report, approve the submittal of AHAC's 2022 Incentives and Recommendations Report to the Florida Housing Finance Corporation by December 31, and authorize the city manager or designee to execute all necessary documents required for the submittal of the AHAC's 2022 Incentives and Recommendations Report, subject to approval by the city attorney as to form and legality.
Okay, Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, John, members of the commission, excuse me. Mr. John Wattel is here from Housing and Community Development to introduce the item.
Mr. Wattel, good to see you.
Thank you.
The AHAC chair.
My name's John Wattel. As you know, I'm with the city's Housing and Community Development Division. I'm here with Jamie Bell, who's the chair of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, which we call AHAC for short, and we want to talk about the Incentives and Recommendations Report, or the IRR for short. Now, this is important because in order to receive SHIP funds, which is the state Housing Initiative Partnership Program, in order to receive these funds, which are kind of a major funding source for affordable housing in the state of Florida, the state requires the city to submit an IRR, and basically, it's a review of local regulations and incentives that impact the cost of building housing. The IRR is developed by AHAC and includes their recommendations to the city commission. So just for a quick overview on what the SHIP program is, it's basically a product of the legislature, the legislature. It's a state program. It's in the legislation in Chapter 420. It's a state program, and it's a funding source, and the, one of the positives about this particular funding source is collections increase when housing prices increase. So as the need grows, the funding source grows. The state requires that local governments do a couple of tasks to get the funding. We have to do an annual report about what we did with the money and that kind of thing. We do that every year. We have to do a local housing assistance plan that describes our programs and our budgets and our predicted funding and the like, and that's a three-year cycle. The next one is going to come up at the beginning of next year. You have to have an Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, and the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee has to produce the IRR and present it to the city commission, and the city commission has to accept it and send it to the state in order to receive the funding. Y'all are probably pretty familiar with what our program is, but in case anyone isn't, just quickly, we do home repair, a lot of home repair. There's a lot of benefits to doing that. We do down payment assistance to help folks move from renting into homeownership. We do some mortgage foreclosure intervention in case someone misses a payment somewhere along the line and don't have to lose their house, and we do a lot of homeowner and homebuyer counseling. So we do a lot of things. There's a lot of other things that the city does with this funding, but that's just some of them. So, the Incentives and Recommendations Report, what does that have to have? So, except for the first two incentives, they have to review 11 incentives that impact the cost of providing affordable housing. They're called out in the statute. They focus on the land development regulations and the comprehensive plan. What AHAC does is for all these incentives, they ask some questions like, does the city provide these incentives for affordable housing, and do city regulations unnecessarily increase the cost of housing? They can also recommend other strategies, which they've done, and the city, except for the first two recommendations, which the city has to implement, and we do, the city is not required to implement all the recommendations in the report. They're required to accept the report and send it on. We know that you'll consider them, and in the past, we have implemented many of the recommendations. So this is the list of the 11 recommendations that the city or the AHAC is required to review. We've done that, and you can read that yourselves. We don't have to go over each one unless you want to, but to actually present the recommendations that are in the IRR, we're going to have our chair, Jamie Bell, present that part to you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Wattel. Ms. Bell, welcome.
Thanks, John. Good afternoon, or good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. Thank you so much for having me. I'm Jamie Bell. I'm a professional engineer and the chair of your AHAC. I also want to take a second to just thank Commissioners Chestnut and Sacco for getting us on the evening portion of the agenda. I do work full-time, but I really wanted to be here, so thank you very much. As John said, there are 11 items we are required to review, and in lieu of going through each of those, we just wanted to highlight the five main points that came out of it from our perspective. To the extent practical, we want to link these incentives to the provision of actually providing affordable housing. It sounds like a no-brainer, but sometimes it's assumed that those savings are passed along to tenants and homebuyers, and they are not. So we'd like to directly link those incentives to actual affordable housing in the community. We would really like to see increased engagement with the community. We do host public workshops throughout the year, and there is some advertising that goes on, but generally speaking, you can always do more. And so, as you can see, we'd like to meet the people where they are, do more outreach to churches, community centers, local groups, and just really try our best to connect people more directly with those affordable housing opportunities. And we in the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, we would like to be more included. As you know, we submitted a letter to the commission referencing inclusionary versus exclusionary zoning, and while we might be a little bit divided within the committee about our individual ideas and opinions, as a whole, we'd like the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee to be included in discussions relating to affordable housing. We have folks who work in the real estate area. We have folks who work in local churches and community organizers, and we think our people are really in tune with what the community needs are and where those needs need to be taken care of. And so, we just ask that we be more included with affordable housing discussions in the future, and that's already being done with some of the meetings that are happening next month, so thank you for that. Tying into the increased engagement with the community is also increased education within the community about the development process. There appears to be a lot of confusion sometimes about how these new developments are approved, where they go, and why, and so we think there would just be a benefit to generally more education and outreach to help people better understand zoning, land development regulations, type of variances we offer to incentivize affordable housing, things like that. We'd like to continue to focus on home rehabilitation and weatherization. We do have that home repair program that SHIP funding can be used for, but it's woefully underutilized, and it's been brought to our attention that part of that relates to the availability of contractors who are available to or are willing to accept the funding available to do those jobs, and so we would like the commission to consider finding ways to connect vendors to the homeowners who are looking to utilize our programs, finding ways to bring more vendors onto the approved list, or reach out to maybe non-traditional resources such as the UF and Santa Fe Building Schools, other organizations that maybe are nonprofits but will do these home repairs through the same financial mechanism. And so, really just more focused not just on home purchasing, but home repairs, so that affordable housing remains affordable housing where it is and where it's needed. And then last but not least, we want to continue to focus on preserving the unique qualities of the specific neighborhoods around Gainesville. I'm sure you're very familiar with some of the drama around some developments and where they're happening and the type of density that they're bringing, and we are just asking the commission to perhaps embark on a study focused on anti-gentrification, anti-displacement measures. So we understand the need for growth throughout the city, and that sometimes it's easier to put new developments in some places than others, but it's very important that we maintain the culture and the aesthetics of the neighborhoods that these developments are going into, and we want to focus on preserving, again, those unique qualities of those neighborhoods. And, you know, that's part of what the Development Review Board does with some of the variance reviews. We look on that committee as well, and we look at ensuring that variances kind of match the neighborhood and the community that they're in, and we want larger affordable housing developments to be focused on the same thing. So those are the five big takeaways from the Incentives and Recommendations Report. A lot of it is similar things that are repeated from year to year, but generally speaking, I think our committee, these are some of the most committed folks that I've seen on the committee in my years being on it, and they're really passionate about affordable housing. I know the commissioners who've sat in with us have seen that and the sometimes heated discussions we get into, and even if we don't agree, I think those discussions are really important. And like I said, because these folks are in the community, talking to the folks who have these affordable housing needs and are just kind of deeply aware of what those problems are, we would like to be part of the solution as well and to be brought into the discussion at large more. So I think, is that my last slide? Just those guys? One more. Just kidding. So the recommendation, this is what you actually care about in the end. I have to read it verbatim? I'll read it verbatim. The AHAC recommends that the city commission, one, accept the Incentives and Recommendations Report, two, approve the submittal of the IRR to the Florida Housing Finance Corporation by December 31 of this year, and three, authorize the city manager or designee to execute all necessary documents required for the submittal of the IRR, subject to approval by the city attorney as to form and legality.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Bell, and thank you for your leadership and participation in AHAC. It's a very much an important job, and we do appreciate all the input that y'all have given. Commissioner Sacco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Bell. Nice to see you again. Yeah. It's always a joy to join AHAC when I'm able. I do appreciate that you brought up those recommendations that the committee worked on, apart from the generic part of the report that we need, and as we had in some of our discussions, there are some things that we are working on and taking baby steps towards, but I know Cory has also joined us in those meetings. Thank you. And he's heard, he's heard very clearly what y'all are looking for, and I think he's heard what this commission's looking for, and I don't think the two are out of sync. So I hope that staff is taking those to heart, and with that, I will move staff's recommendation to accept the incentives, to approve the submittal of Incentives and Recommendations Report, and to authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, that we approve the recommendation. Madam Clerk, do you have anybody sign up to speak to this item?
Yes, we do.
Dana Silva.
Dana Silva.
All right, great. Thank you, Ms. Bell. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm really happy about this today, that Jamie and everyone gets a chance to talk to you about what they're doing. And I've said it on a few of the committee meetings, and I'm just so impressed with, you know, the discussion, the level of discussion, as Jamie said, you know, sometimes they have differences of opinion, but, you know, everybody's coming from different perspectives. And I think it's a wonderful vehicle for bringing the whole community into discussions about housing and the various neighborhoods. I love their five main points that they're bringing up, and I think this goes along a lot with what Commissioner Duncan Walker started out with, was equitable development so that everyone benefits from the distribution of the benefits of growth in this city, and it doesn't just get sucked up to the top by concentrated ownership. I love that they're focusing on attention to homeownership and housing rehabilitation. Those were very key points in 2018 and 2019 from the Florida Housing Coalition and Schimberg Center as key urgent priorities for housing in Gainesville were protection of the existing housing stock that's naturally affordable, and they had maps and all of that, and including protection of single-family houses as relatively affordable compared to county and state and so forth. You can look confused, but I can show you, Adrian. Anyway, I think it's maybe now that the mayor's main priority was concluded today, capped off really in a vote a few hours ago, then I think it's time to return to that, return to the, some of the recommendations from years past to focus less on zoning and more on, you know, what is practical. And I think this committee is a wonderful place, and especially with Commissioners Chestnut and Sacco and in the future, other Commissioners to be on board as a sort of standing committee for housing in the city and a place where the community and the Commission can all get together and talk through them about what really is needed. They had a wonderful guest there last time from the school board who raised the question of, you know, really, all of us sitting around here, we have access to housing, and an important question to ask is, of those who, you know, are seeking housing, is what do you need? And those who are seeking better housing, what do you need? Those who seek better, you know, more affordable housing, what do you need? And let the conversations come more from the ground up rather than from the top down in so many ways. I just think that, you know, this is a place to bring in some bigger world factors like, you know, foreclosures and interest and insurance and so forth.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Madam Clerk? Okay, thank you. Mr. Duncan Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to those who presented on this very, very important topic. I had a question that I think might best be posed to the City Manager, because I heard the Chair of the Committee asking for more opportunities to be brought to the table, and I certainly don't want to usurp or overstep what you all have already put into place. But we have recently pulled together the working group, the Inter-County or Inter-Agency Affordable Housing Working Group. And it is another opportunity for, it's really an opportunity for both sides of the street to get together and talk about what it is that we are doing in the affordable housing space. That was based on some of the more challenging conversations about housing, where it goes, who does it, why, et cetera. But I wonder, Inter-Manager Curry, if there may be a place at the table, and like I said, I know this is a new group, I know that you all are charting the path forward and who's going to be a part of it, but if at all possible, and if it is appropriate, perhaps there might be a seat at the table for at least one member of this group to join that conversation?
Mr. Mayor, the group that we have assembled is really a staff-working group. It's just staff working back and forth between the city and the county, and it's staff. I mean, I guess I can just put a period at that.
You can. You can put a period at that, but I think that it certainly is never lost on me when I hear anyone asking about opportunities to be brought to the table or have their voices heard. So I think there will be future opportunities to make sure that that happens. But thank you so much for the incredible work that you all are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ariola.
Thank you. I also wanted to thank you. I think that having a framework for going forward is going to be a really good idea, and we need a lot of people supporting affordable housing. We have projects come up before us that are 100% affordable housing, projects that come before us that are 10%, 5%, we're talking in some cases hundreds of units, and we see very few people come out to support it. So we really need folks to come out and support affordable housing when it's ready to go, because oftentimes when we get to that point, is when the most opposition shows up. So, we really, really could use something like this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Again, thanks for the report. Thanks for all the work that went into the report. We see the report, right? We don't see like the dozens and dozens and dozens of hours that go into it. So, please share with your committee our appreciation for all of that, and I look forward to following all of this as it progresses from afar. With that, Madam Clerk, we'll move to a, I think this is just a voice vote, right?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Report's accepted. All right, thank you all. Madam Clerk, next item.
Our next reading, our next item is the First Reading of Ordinance Number 211262, Land Development Code Amendments to Parking Regulations and Minimums. An ordinance of the City of Gainesville, Florida amending Section 30-7.5 and Section 30-7.6 of the Land Development Code to eliminate parking minimums and introduce language for structured parking requirements and mid-street parking for loading and unloading in suburban and urban zoning districts, providing directions to the codifier providing a severability clause or appealing clause and an effective date.
Mr. Castillo, welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Mayor. For the record, my name is Juan Castillo. I'm a planner with the Department of Sustainable Development. And the item that I bring before you this evening is a request for amending our current parking regulations in order to eliminate parking minimum requirements, add consequently language to create parking maximums, eliminate, or excuse me, allow for mid-street parking as well as allow or create regulations for the provisions of structured parking. So, the item that is before you is one of the items that was identified in the 2019 Land Development Code Change Joint Meeting, which is a joint meeting that you had with the City Plan Board, again, back in 2019. There's a whole list of items that were identified on that meeting. This is number 14 of that list, opposite direction. So, as you're aware, parking minimums are regulations that necessaries require developments to provide a minimum set of off-street parking. And the idea behind that is that this will ensure that any impacts associated with the needs of a development for parking would be satisfied with the requirement. Unfortunately, as several studies and reviews have noted, there's a lot of...
Sorry, ambrogous, I think.
Of course.
Yeah.
So, there are a lot of adverse impacts associated with parking minimums. First of all, they encourage an excess of off-street parking where a developer may be forced to provide more off-street parking than they are actually needing. They also create urban spaces that are low, that have low productive value while having high infrastructure costs. So, in other words, they don't contribute as much as they, as much as it's required to maintain those facilities, their facilities. As well as, they also provide a hostile pedestrian environment, if you can imagine, and that's probably most of us here in Gainesville have done. We have had to traverse almost empty garage, excuse me, parking spaces in order to get to our destination of business, and we have to basically frog jump around cars that are trying to almost kill us. No, that's an exaggeration. Strike that from the record. Too late. So, along those lines, you have cost burdens to small businesses that are required to provide parkings that the mayor may not need, parking spaces that is. They increase impervious surfaces, which produces a situation with stormwater, as well as the increased heat sink effect where heat is maintained or captured by impervious surfaces and then released into the air, if you will, creating for hotter, a hotter urban environment. So, several municipalities have identified these adverse impacts and have taken steps to either drastically reduce or remove parking minimum requirements. Among them, you have, here and forward, you have places like Fort Lauderdale and Sarasota. Now, these places have eliminated parking requirements within their city center. We will be the first, as far as I know, so far, first place here in Florida that has eliminated them completely in the entirety of the city. Now, currently in the City of Gainesville, we have our transit zones, which have, do have some minimum parking that are not, that are not required. So, for example, non-residential uses in transit zones don't require parking minimums. Residential uses up to U8 don't require parking minimums, but then from U7 on due. We also have certain uses that have parking minimum requirements associated with them. Each use, based on different factors, have different sets of parking requirements. Now, it's important to note that there is no adopted methodology as to how to determine what these minimum parking requirements are, and some of these numbers have been accused of being somewhat arbitrary, which is pretty much the research that we found as well. So, take that as is. But the proposal before you is to eliminate entirely the parking minimum requirements within transit zones and to eliminate parking minimum requirements within our use tables. Instead, provide parking maximum requirements, and that's important because this would mitigate the potential for developments to come in and to provide excess parking that they may not need, or we don't need for that matter. Now, in the event that a development does need more parking than our parking maximums, if you will, the code as it's currently written does provide some flexibility in that situation. We can amend administratively parking allowances up to 10 parking spaces or 10% of the parking spaces being provided, whichever one is greater, as long as the developer shows us that they need those parking spaces. So they just have to provide some justification for that. If they need more than those parking spaces allotment, then the proposal is to add language that would require the developer to provide a full parking study that would show their market, you know, their market analysis as to why they would need so much parking. And there's a list of everything that that parking study will have to demonstrate, such as the minimal impact to surrounding areas, they will have to demonstrate that the parking is appropriate with the area, they will have to demonstrate that the street liveliness is not going to be effective excessively, et cetera. You know, this is also in your backup. And that leads me to structured parking. So in the event that the developer shows that they need more than, well, 200 or more parking spaces, or if they just want that, we are proposing to add language that would require developers to provide structured parking in that event. So, if a developer or a business decides that they need 200 parking spaces or more, they will be required to provide structured parking. And our code currently does not have a limit on how much parking spaces can be, can be put in a structured parking, as long as the parking is structured, elevated, et cetera. So, we would just, we would allow them to go down that route in order to get their over 200 parking spaces. And the reason why we came up with 200, we took a short snapshot of some of our current businesses here in Gainesville, some of the stronger ones, if you will, such as Whole Foods, Publix, Lowe's, and we noticed that, on average, for the most part, they tend to lie around the 200 space mark as far as how many parkings they provide. And when we looked at their usage, we noticed that consistently, they do not maximize their parking space use. For example, you have like Ray Bonefish Grill, which currently has around a 17% parking rate use. Publix has 38%. And you got, look at Walmart, which is probably the one that currently has the most usage from the people that we, or from the businesses that we looked at, but again, they're at 66%. Lowe's by 13th is at 20%, et cetera. Of course, you have your Outliners, but for the most part, most of the parking that these big-box retailers are providing are not being used to the full extent that they can be. And this is basically what that looks like. You have Aldi over here, which, again, is not using most of the parking spaces, but Sam's, Butler, Whole Foods, et cetera. And this is, as you walk around or drive around Gainesville, this is actually a common site. Aerial views, you got Lowe's, again. Most of the parking spaces are not being used. Of course, there are, this is not taken into account Christmas or other type of high holidays. This is mainly looking at what would be more consistent. Burlington's, Aldi's over at Butler Plaza, Whole Foods. Target has, looking at it from an aerial view, has probably more of the, more of the use of their parking spot, but again, you see a lot of empty parking spaces back here, which is also problematic because somebody has to traverse all of that in order to get to the business. So, moving on, another part of the proposal before you is to introduce language that would allow for mid-street parking within an urbanized area. Currently, the City of Gainesville does allow for mid-street parking in the downtown area. We are proposing to extend that over to the transit zone slash urbanized area. And basically, this is to allow for infill development flexibility so when their site restrains them from providing loading, parking space within their site, again, due to size limitations and just the overall compactness of an urbanized area, this would give them the ability to park out in the middle of the street in order to make their deliveries and then leave the premises. There are languages that were being proposed that would, A, provide direction as to when staff would allow for mid-street parking to occur, which involves looking at the type of streets that are adjacent to the development, the times of deliveries, the intensity of use, the traffic associated with the area, and any other site constraints. And further language goes on to clarify what we would consider, or what that middle of the street parking actually looks like, the type of vehicle that can park there, how long they can park there, and, you know, the association that the vehicle has with the business or the development that is being served. But the full language is on your back, in the backup. And with that, I apologize for the long presentation, but that concludes it, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo. Commissioner Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to move Ordinance 211262 on first reading with Huddle only.
Second.
Motion and second. We had Commissioner Ariola, but we'll come back around to him. In fact, if you don't mind pushing his button once I turn it off, as I remember. Commissioner Chestnut.
Mr. Mayor, do you have an idea, or do we have a record of the number of accidents that may have been caused by the mid-street parking?
I apologize, I did not look at that data. But I can assure you, if that's available, I can get that to you.
Yeah. Okay. It's just always been a real irritant to me.
Chief, did you hear that request? Number of accidents that have been attributed to mid-block parking, if we can get that before second reading. Just, a memo to the full Commission would be great. Go ahead.
Mid-block loading zones, right, not parking?
Mid-block loading.
Right.
Yeah.
Mr. Castillo can explain what he said. Yeah, right. Just like we see out here, right, I mean, trucks parking in the middle of the street for loading and unloading.
Rest, it would just be used for loading purposes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, we'll, if you could just give that back to the Commission in a memo. What do you want that for, like, the last five years? Be good, five years? All right, thank you. Was that it, Commissioner Chestnut? Okay. Commissioner Duncan Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner Chestnut, for asking that question. That's of concern for me as well. I wanted to ask about the future of cars and how parking spaces or this proposal is taking into consideration any EV charging. What are the thoughts on that? I don't know a whole lot about that, and I'm just curious as, as to what is required in terms of that. I know a lot of folks are, are making purchases now that's going to require the usage of charging stations at different locations and parking areas like the ones that you showed us just a few moments ago are, are being used in that way. Can you tell me a little bit about that?
So, for EV charges, this, this study did not look at that. We were primarily concerned with the provisions of excess, excess parking and mitigation of areas that are predominantly not being used on a consistent basis. Current EV charges, from what I've seen, have, have taken place within areas that have been consistently used in parking. But again, with this, we do not, we do not look at EV stations as part of this proposal. But, but yeah, I, I don't know if that answered your question.
It did, that you didn't look at it. But I think that that is something that's important because if there is surplus space that could be used in that regard, I would be interested in seeing how much space would be needed by anybody who would need to charge their car while they were parked at Target or anywhere else. So, I don't know, did I see you stepping forward maybe to speak to that?
Do you have some context?
Okay.
Just, just to piggyback on and to some effect, answer your question. For what is being proposed, it was not directly addressed or spoken to, but some things that we are doing inside the department is trying to streamline some of our review processes to make that a little bit easier. So, for example, today, if some developer comes in and wants to add EV charging stations to existing parking lots, a few months ago, it was not immediately clear which one of our review processes that that would fall into, whether it would be a simple building permit or through a full site plan review. What we've done is modified our review processes to put that in a place that gets us what we need, but also keeps it streamlined so that those can be added in a more efficient way. Also, for some sites, in particular, the Target that you saw earlier, we have seen that they wanted to modify or revamp their parking lot to include that EV charging up close to the, the building facade, and we have modified a lot of our processes, again, to incorporate that and encourage that and streamline that as much as we can.
Okay. So, you don't perceive this proposal in any way inhibiting that ability to provide EV charging?
Absolutely not.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Thank you, and I can add, because I've read quite a bit on this, and I see Mr. Cunningham as well, what this is quickly becoming, because especially with the car companies saying, you know, we're gonna transition all of our new production over to full EV, they, they really see that process happening quickly. It's becoming a non-price competitive effort on the part of retailers. In other words, we want to attract these EV drivers, and so, we're gonna put in the charging stations in existing parking spaces to get them to come to our place because they know they can come and plug in their car for free, and we know nothing's free, but we're gonna pay the electricity for you to come shop at Target or Whole Foods or Publix or whatever. And, and so, you know, as I start, you know, looking more closely at these parking lots of these retail places, you're seeing more and more of these EV stations popping up because they wanna get the person to come park at their thing. So, we're just, what, what we're gonna see over the next five years is a lot of parking spaces being reserved for EV only, and they're just gonna use, the city's not gonna have to pay for that. Now, what we would like to do is charge for that. You know, we want, we want, that's a new customer base for GRU that we don't currently have. But what's great about it for us, we don't have to provide the infrastructure. The, the owners of the property will do that, and we just have to provide the access, basically, the, the electrical access. So, it's actually really promising, the trend that's happening right now. Thank you. Do you want to add that?
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, like, you, you kinda hit on it. I think from a GRU perspective, our Office of Sustainability is looking at EVs right now and grants that are out there and all of that to see if it makes sense for us to really kind of explore the business of the, the charge, you know, actually putting in chargers. But whether we do that or not, as the mayor kind of articulated, the revenue from that and the electricity is gonna come from GRU. And so, but we're looking at that market and seeing what that's gonna look like and, you know, as we move forward. I will also just reinforce something else the mayor said is that we're really projecting, you know, sales in the future going up from the, from the EV charging if the market goes in the direction that everybody thinks it is, and a lot of our vehicles are changed to electric vehicles. So, so we're tracking that. Our Office of Sustainability is trying to figure out if the fund, if there's funding sources for us to get into the specifically building chargers. I, I don't know if that's the case. I would think probably not, but we will make sure the infrastructure is there so that they have access when chargers are constructed.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, great question. Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, that was something I wanted to talk about as well, and y'all have covered most of my points on it. I, I am not one-hundred percent certain that the market is going to meet the need because the market has a way of missing the mark and then asking why government didn't force them to do it after they've already built something. So, I'm a little dubious that the market will just magically make it happen, particularly regarding apartments. I'm, I'm less concerned about how people, whether people will charge their cars where they go shopping than I am them wanting to charge their cars at home. I may not be a typ- typical EV potential consumer, but in my thoughts on looking for EVs, I wanna make sure I can charge it at home overnight so it's ready to go and I don't have to worry about finding a place to charge. So, I'm a little dubious about it, but, but I will say that since we're only talking about eliminating the parking minimums in transit zones and not everywhere that something could be built, correct?
So, we know, we're, this would be applied, applicable everywhere.
Okay, all right. So, here's a concern that I have. This is where I, I got off track. The slide that lists the stores and the percentage of, of usage of parking spaces. We looked at the Oaks Mall on a Sunday before the mall hours even opened. We looked at the Bonefish Grill at ten-twenty-six in the morning. I'm, I'm not sure that we, I'm not sure this chart is useful to us, is my point. The idea that the Oaks has a quarter of their parking spaces filled before work starts on Sunday, before the mall opens on Sunday, basically, does not lead me in the direction I was hoping that it would lead me. I want to be for getting rid of parking minimums because I've read all the literature on it. But the truth is, people do still have cars, and they're gonna have cars even if they're EVs. Huge fan of EVs, even bigger fan of transit. I, I would say that there's maybe Adrian and Lauren, but other than that, I'm probably the biggest fan of transit up here on the dais. But a well-used transit system, the best of transit systems, is not everybody. It partially is the problem of the developer if they develop something that doesn't have enough parking space. I don't think developers always make the best decisions. And then it becomes our problem if they build something that doesn't have enough. Build a great apartment complex that people wanna live in, and then they realize, oh my goodness, we're gonna have to just park on the streets. So, I really wanna support this, but I'm having trouble with it, particularly with this slide where we went and looked at parking at the wrong time of day in nearly every one of these. And, and I, I wonder what the parking would look like, not even at Christmas, but just at, you know, I don't know, Saturday at six PM at Bonefish instead of Monday at ten-twenty-six in the morning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Ariola?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I very much like the discussion that we're having right now, particularly going over some of the previous requirements that we've had, which in the discussion, it seemed as though they were arbitrary selections. So, how do you know what's the right amount of spaces per bowling lane or something like that? I think that was what we saw. So, my, you know, I, I would like for us to, to remove our parking minimums. My, my major concern conceptually, which there's always a solution to, to these issues, would be the, the free rider issue, which is if development companies, you know, homeowners, whatever, they decide they wanna build more, have more homes, more units, if we do not have any kind of guidance, any city policy that can alleviate the issue of, well, we're not gonna build any parking, period, you know, ultimately, if people decide to move in with cars, you know, you would hope that someone would be aware of where they can park before they sign a lease. This is not always the case in Gainesville, but, you know, we'll set that aside. So, I guess my, my concern is, you know, how can we make, make sure that we're keeping the streets from just becoming free-for-alls? I mean, that's, that's really the only concern that I, that I would have because I, I do think that our parking minimums are too restrictive, and it ends up taking up, you know, so much of the project land at, at the end of the day. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Usually when they stand up, they want.
No, no. He's waiting for you, but go ahead.
Well, I'm waiting for you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Andrew Persons, Special Advisor to City Manager. There are a couple of points of clarification that I think may be helpful for the commission. I guess first, we have traditionally in Gainesville had a very progressive approach to parking requirements to begin with. So, we have not only, as Mr. Castillo showed you, large swaths of the city where parking, automobile parking we're talking about is not required. We also have provisions in the land development code that we didn't talk about here that actually provide for further parking reduction in, outside of the transect zone. So, in our, in our conventional zoning districts all throughout the city. And those are used fairly regularly with development. What we're talking about, and, and to Commissioner Ward's point about, you know, sort of unfettered market, you know, running amok, the, what this represents is not the city using dusty old standards for parking to set minimums, but instead, not turning it over to the market because we do not, I could tell you, we do not see development in Gainesville coming in without any parking being provided for a number of reasons. One, people still have cars, they still drive places, that's still the dominant form of transportation in this country, and we're not urban enough to realistically, with, with the exception of maybe a few small pockets, really be able to kind of do all, everything you need to do without some form of conveyance, personal conveyance. Two, development financing requires parking as, as a minimum component of most projects. So, it's not a city requirement, but it's a lender requirement that they want to see projects that have some parking within them. Whether that standard that the, the financier, whether that matches with the city standard, that is probably not the case because the city standards have not been updated since the, probably the nineteen eighties, nineteen nineties. And so, so I wanna make sure that that, you know, this is not that drastic of a change from where we are today because, again, Gainesville has had a long history of being very progressive with its parking policy. The second thing I think I wanted to mention in terms of the, the, the sort of analysis about parking maximums and, you know, parking use of, of, of some existing spaces here in Gainesville, the city also has existing parking maximum standards for, for the reasons that Mr. Castillo highlighted. We don't want the type of parking that was built in the seventies, which is essentially large parking lots like the Oaks Mall, built essentially to handle only peak demand during the holiday season. That is an inefficient use of land, and it creates greater stormwater impacts and all of the, all of the issues that Mr. Castillo highlighted. In fact, if you recall, a couple of years ago, the, this commission rezoned proactively the Oaks Mall property to a transect zone. It had been commercial prior to that, had a large amount of unused parking. Subsequent to that, that rezoning, the Sears has now been replaced with Shands outpatient, and we have a, an apartment project that is going to be underway, under construction in the south, southeastern portion of the site on unused parking spaces. So, those are examples where, where I think this, this type of, of approach will help sort of promote more of that. We, we don't anticipate, and we would not have recommended approval if we felt that this would sort of open the lid and we would have just, you know, everybody parking everywhere because that, for new development, which is, this is what we're talking about, we're talking about new development, we are not seeing projects come in with no parking. We're just seeing projects integrate parking, especially mid-rise and high-rise projects, integrate parking into the structure itself. So, hopefully that's helpful. I just wanted to provide a little bit of context to some of it because I know it's, parking can be sometimes a sensitive issue, so.
Thank you. Did you conclude? Commissioner Saka?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to everyone who worked on this. Parking is a sensitive issue. Like, I've never seen people angrier than when they leave church and try to get out of a parking lot. So, that's, that's probably the meanest I've seen people be in a parking lot. So, I'm not opposed to moving forward now, as Mr. Person said, nobody's, nobody's proposing a structure or any development without parking. That, that would be economic suicide at this point. I, I do agree with Commissioner Ward, I wish we had better data. That said, we, we have eyes. Like, everybody up here drives to some degree. Like, we've, we've seen a lot of these spaces just sit empty throughout the year. So, while hard data is really good, anecdotally, we, we've seen it with our own eyes. We, we know that this is true. So, I'm, I am comfortable letting, you know, businesses kind of make that decision of how much parking will we need? And, and they can, they can make that decision for themselves. What I do have a question about is the mid-street parking for businesses. So, I, I know that it's gonna be in transit zones, and I know that we have you, and you can always tell us what the transit zones are. How does the average bear know where a transit zone ends or starts? My, my, the question I'm getting to is, how will a business delivery or anyone know, oh, I am in a transit zone, I can definitely do this?
So, for the record, Juan Castillo, so transit zones are several things. The first point is when a property is on transect, the adjacent street that's associated with the transit zone is labeled an urban street type. And so, that urban street type has a designation of either principal street, thoroughfare street, et cetera, but that street type is associated with a transit zone area. So, if a developer is doing a development and they will fall within that, first of all, of course, they're a property zone transect, but any adjacent street has that designation of urban street type, then they would be eligible for, for that allowance of, of mid-street level parking. And of course, we would review that when a development comes before us. That was, that would be one of the requirements for our review is that to, to see what type of street type is there, the width of the street, whether the street will have the capacity to, to allow for mid-street, you know, mid-street parking for the purposes of loading and unloading. That would, again, be part of that review. Does that answer your? Does that answer your question?
That's the technical answer for, for everybody in this room. I'm talking about like, the average human being. I open a shop, I don't know anything about zoning, I just know I rented this space. How do I know that I can do this?
Signage.
Oh, okay. Thank you. We're gonna put up signage and mark this somehow. That is the answer.
That's right. That's what we do already for downtown. We, we mark it with, uh, marked streets with signage.
You have a lot of signs downtown. I don't see them all.
Yeah. I, I, Mr. Mayor, if you, if you, thank you. One thing I, I did want to sort of point out, and I would ask for the commission's, um, um, help with, uh, I don't know honestly if the 200 parking, um, space sort of threshold for structured parking isn't something that we may have to come back and address at a future, you know, at a future date with the commission. We're just gonna have to sort of see, um, because it's a little bit of a delicate threshold. I, I think what the intent is, is to try to discourage large surface parking lots and instead encourage more efficient use of land through structured parking. But obviously, there is a cost associated with structured parking that is higher than surface parking. And so I would just ask, you know, the commission that if we come before you in six to nine months and, and want to talk about this, this one issue again, that we have the, uh, um, that, that we have the space to do so. So that's it.
It says a fraternity party apparently out in our lawn.
Someone's having more fun than we are. I, I do have one, one final comment, Mr. Person, to that. Um, I, I think if nothing else, the chart is useful for one very important thing. I actually know how many spots are in this. So we have some kind of frame of reference. So if you told me 500 spots, I'd go, I don't know how big that is.
Right.
If you told me 50, I still wouldn't know how big that is. So it does kind of give us an example of, you know, with those thresholds. So I think the one closest would be that Publix next to Target. 200 does not seem like a lot.
No.
Um, and I guess if you make them smaller and smaller, so cars won't fit, they're even, you can fit even more.
Right.
But it, it does give us kind of a visual reference of what that threshold would be.
Right. And I think that was the intent behind that, was to try to give, give some context for like, what, what a 400, you know, parking space lot looks like versus 200 with, with local context.
Yeah, I would not have guessed that Walmart on Waldo has almost 600. Would not have been a guess.
We are seeing, and I, I, um, I think a good example of this is the, uh, the new Westgate, um, Publix redevelopment. That, that is a smaller, uh, parking lot, and as you could see, it is really well-used. Every time I'm over there, it is typically, um, uh, why you don't necessarily, I haven't had to, you know, anecdotally speaking, drive around and try to find parking, but it is a, like a well-used lot during normal, like, peak hours. And that's ultimately what we're trying to get to with this is that you have infrastructure that's being used close to, um, capacity most of the time of the year, not infrastructure that's being used once or twice a year. Um, and then the rest of the times, it's essentially fallow, so.
Thank you, Mr. Persons. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm good to move forward at this time.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I strongly support this. Uh, you know, it, um, doesn't prevent parking from being built. It's not a, it's not a, um, uh, you know, sort of punitive measure, uh, but it allows for the right amount of parking for the right project. And, you know, I think back to the project, uh, commission approved just, I think, two weeks ago, for almost seven, almost 800 people, um, and 100 parking spaces internal to the structure. So, um, the reason they can do that is because the, the, um, the, 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 um, building is three blocks from our region's largest employer and the largest, uh, university in Florida. So, um, people, most people that live there will be able to walk to do most of what they need to do. And, and it will be a luxury to, to own a car and live there. And I guarantee that those spaces will be expensive. Uh, they won't, um, sort of, the first 100 people that show up, get them. You will, you will reserve that space. If you get there and someone's in your space, it will be towed. Commissioner Santos, do you, do you, off the top of your head, what the, what a space goes for at standard? It's like 200 a month, I think? I think it's around there. Um, so I mean, that, the, the point is that, that, the, 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 the market will regulate that because it's a commodity. Now, they, they will not build more than they need because they don't want an unused, um, asset sitting there that costs them a lot. I mean, average parking space costs $10,000 to build. Um, so they're not gonna build it unless they know that they can get, um, a return for that. But they won't build too little because there is an incentive, a, a, a market incentive to, to build the right amount. Um, and so this will just, this will, um, allow a dynamic market to figure out what the right amount of parking is in the right spot. Um, and that's very different for a project three blocks from the University of Florida campus versus, you know, um, you know, way, way out, um, say, um, in the northwest, uh, you know, by the, by the Walmart or Senior Center. That, I mean, that, the, the, the dynamics are just different. And I will say, I mean, I, I hate governing by anecdote, but, uh, I can say in all my time driving around Gainesville to businesses, to homes, to apartments, I, I can maybe count on one hand the number of times I haven't been able to find a parking spot. Right? I mean, um, every time I go to Lowe's on 13th, which is almost a weekly occasion, um, usually twice in a day, where you know how that all works, you forget the one little thing. I've always had a parking space. There's too much parking there. And, and that drives up the cost of, uh, housing, it drives up the cost of commercial property. Uh, and it has, um, significant environmental, um, damage, uh, that, that is associated with that as well. So, um, this is a, um, I think, I, I, I do want to put a punctuation mark on something that Mr. Person said. This is not the drastic change in policy that many cities would see it as. Where we have already been kind of, uh, uh, slow-walking it up to that line, um, with our current policies. And this is just sort of getting it across the goal line, whereas, you know, in, in some, I was in, uh, Cleveland this summer. We went to a baseball game downtown, and it was just surface parking lot after surface parking lot. Most inefficient use of space, created a traffic nightmare. You know, and, and so for them to do something like this would be a huge, huge change. But, um, yeah, I, I think this is absolutely the right time and the right policy, um, that will add, um, significant value to, uh, the, the way our community, um, moves and lives and, um, and encourages businesses to locate, you know, in, in, in areas we want to attract them without driving up their entry-level costs, uh, because of the required parking. Commissioner Santos?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, first I wanted to, uh, talk about Duncan Walker and the electric vehicle. Some jurisdictions have, uh, mandated, um, and some of our new apartments or, or parking garages, like, some spaces be already built EV, but also have EV ready, or unless they, they build conduit to that place. When the time comes, you can, you actually run and put in the system. And I've seen some like 1%, some at 3%, some at 5% of the spaces. So there are some, that could be something the city looks at in terms of, uh, in, in new, it's, it's in larger projects. They, they have done that to kind of prepare for the, for the future, because there still isn't like a clear standardization on which charger. One thing I think we should consider as a, as I guess in a future budget, is, it's like having some EV chargers that we charge for in the, just in our parking lots here. Um, there really isn't that many in the downtown area, so that might be something to, to consider and kind of pilot, um, uh, in, in the future. For the, the, the parking minimums, um, to the point, uh, about like designing it for Christmas or things like that, we, we don't design our roads for game day. We, we design it for the 99% of the, the time. And by allowing, a developer's not gonna build a project they don't think will be successful. And, and parking is something that they want, and they can still build the parking they need. One of the biggest complaints that I, I hear is, is the endless parking lots of Butler Plaza. That is one of the things that people, that's not Gainesville. And it's right. That's not, endless parking lots is not Gainesville. And it's my part of my district too. The South Port is, I got lots of parking lots.
Well, it's part of all of our districts, Mr. Chestnut and me and Commissioner Saco, so we'll all take ownership of that.
Um, the, they are building some portions that are less parking, it's like the Whole Foods, that's a smaller parking lot there. Yes, there is, yes. Um, but it, by removing this restriction, we let the project kind of fit how they think will best work for them. And they're trying to make money. They want the business to be successful. Um, so they'll build the parking that they need. But also, we have to look at this environmentally. Surface parking lots are the absolute worst thing for the environment. It is impervious ground, stormwater, um, oil that goes drips down into the, into the environment, it's, takes up the most space possible, is used the least efficiently. By having kind of at a certain, kind of stopping large, massive parking lots and having a structured garage, it's significantly better for the environment and significant better usage of, of space. Um, there's also an affordability portion of this. People who are more wealthy have cars, people who are lower income, um, usually are less likely to have cars. And, uh, in an apartment, if, if someone is forced to have a, a parking space, they don't have a car, they are having to pay for that in their rent. Instead of kind of where you've kind of seen some of these apartments go for, well, if you want a parking space, you, you pay for it. Then that, that cost is actually being bared by the person who is using the space for someone who is low-income, they have no cars. I mean, I think one of the, if you look in many of our, um, uh, Gainesville Housing Authority, uh, developments, those parking lots are not, or like low-income, those, those parking lots are not full. Um, and there's, there's a reason for that, but they're made larger because of the mandates that we have put in. Um, and there is a real cost to, to parking. It's one of the top, one of the top things. And, and, and the affordable housing, um, uh, plan that we got today, one of their things was look at removing parking minimums. Um, so I, I hope that we can, uh, move forward on this, uh, both as an affordability, but also as an environmental, um, protection as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. You, you did make a motion, right? Okay. Uh, Commissioner Chestnut?
Thank you. Um, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to follow back with Commissioner Ward. Were you requesting another, uh, review of the, of the percentage of usage, this chart?
Mr. Mayor, um, I, I'm not gonna ask you to go back out and, and do all that work again, but I, this is dubious.
Some of them.
Yeah, the, the, the times of day of the days are, are the, aside from the middle of the night, are some of the lowest usage. So, uh, it, it would certainly help sway me to see that, that there were, that at busier times, there were still tons of availability, rather than trusting my own judgment on it and, and covering by anecdote. But I don't know that I'd, I'd want to ask the staff time to, to go do another one.
Well, I think I'd just like to see some of them before the, uh, the second reading. You can see, you've got great, you, not great usage, but 66% of the usage at Walmart at 10:45 in the morning. But I would like to see some of the usage at the other sites. So you don't have to do the whole study, but just take a, just take a snapshot, look at some of the others.
Mr. Persons and Mr. Castillo are nodding, they can do that. Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so good conversation. I, I, I will say that, um, I, I don't have great faith in, in the market to make great decisions. Sometimes, very often, the market makes great decisions. The problem is, once it's built, if it's a bad decision, it's too late. I, I get that, that the, the funding doesn't come through for things that don't make sense most of the time. But we only need it to be wrong once and built to, to have to live with it. I am gonna be a soft no on this, but I'm willing to be convinced. Uh, I will tell you that I, I am really big on the parking maximums. I, I, I love the idea of, of stopping overbuilding of particularly surface parking. Surface parking is a huge problem for a variety of reasons. It's poor use of space, it's bad for the environment. We don't want to overbuild that. I like parking maximums. But I'm not quite there on the minimums. That doesn't mean I can't get there. This is clearly gonna go by on first reading. I, I am interested to see if my mind can be changed for second reading. I, I've read Schup's work. I, I get it. I'm, I'm not, you know, new to it. I just don't trust the market to do the right thing. I think the market is great as long as government is there to, to herd it and lead it in the right direction. Uh, that's, that's us. So, I, I'd love to get together with staff before second reading. To, I, I'd, I'd love to be sold on this, because I really want to vote for it, but I'm not voting for it today. Thank you.
Okay, um, anybody signed up to speak to this, Madam Secretary? That's a big, that's a big, uh, big promotion. They call you out for the rest of your life, too. Um, Madam Clerk, so a roll call vote.
Commissioner Ariola, Commissioner Chestnut, Commissioner Saco, Commissioner Duncan Walker, Commissioner Ward, Commissioner Hayes Santos, and Mayor Poe.
All right, that motion passes 4-3 with Chestnut, Ward, and Duncan Walker in dissent. I just want to be clear that the, uh, embedded in that motion was a request, um, that we get the five-year accident data for the loading, the, um, mid-street loading. Um, thank you. So yeah, if we get either memo or, and then also include it in backup for the second reading if it's possible by then. Okay, uh, our last item this evening is commission comment. Is there any commission comment? Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Uh, spurred by some of the conversation about EVs, I would love us to, um, have that, to have a workshop scheduled, not necessarily immediately, obviously, we're, we're very busy. But if we don't have the workshop to get started and include our, our sustainable development folks and, and our GRE folks to start the conversation and, and to really nail down some of what we expect of developers particularly, because I'm told by some people, electrician friends, that, that we don't have the, the network capacity for what might be coming, and that we need to be thinking about that infrastructure as we move forward. Because I'm encouraged by some folks' UAB discussions who pointed out that, you know, maximum EV use in this town would be worth to our utility, uh, the equivalent of two or three, uh, contracts, full contracts for, for UF Power. So there is a tremendous amount of potential revenue from this, and it's good for the environment. It's, it's generally good. But we need to make sure our infrastructure is prepared for it, and we're not gonna do that if we wait around until somebody does the wrong thing. So if we could just start looking at a workshop on that, I would love it, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I mean, uh, the city manager and I are making eye contact. Yeah, we, we will get some staff together and we will, we'll start working on that and then be prepared to bring some information and do a workshop and something like that in the future.
Thank you. Commissioner Ariola?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, to that point, uh, Commissioner, that is, uh, one of the recommendations that the Environmental Justice Subcommittee has made to the next commission to include a increment for what it would cost to build out a plan. Um, that's different, of course, from implementing that plan. Um, you know, many cities have done successful EV infrastructure rollouts. Some of them unfortunately were a bit too eager and ahead of the curve, and that ended up, ended up costing them pretty big. So it's all about, it's all about the implementation and how you get the funding for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, all right, uh, see no further business before us. We are adjourned.